Thank you. It is now 7:00 PM. We welcome everyone to the East Point City Council Meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. At 7:00 PM, we always start our invocation with our councilwoman, Sarah Lucido, and then we go right into our invocation. Please, Ms. Lucido.
Dear God, we thank you for all the blessings you have given us. Please help us all to use the talents we possess to benefit our community. Help us to work together towards the same goals, even if we travel down different paths. Help us to recognize the fact that we all inhabit this world together and that at our core, we all want the same things, to live a happy life in peace with those around us. Help us to accept our others without prejudice and work together with our neighbors to build a better East Point and a better world. It is in your name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you for that prayer and going into the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Can we have roll call, please?
Member Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here.
Councilmember Lucido?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here, City of East Point.
Mayor Owens?
I am here, City of East Point.
I'm in East Point, too.
East Point.
Thank you.
Sounds like everyone is in East Point. Thank you. Can we get the approval of agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have the hearing of the public. We're going to open it after, you get three minutes and then you get an additional three minutes after the meeting. This is a time for any resident or people that's not even a resident for say, to say something as far as opinions, suggestions, or things that you might have, you know, dealing with in the city. So we welcome you to say what you have to say at this point and later on, if you don't get to finish, again, you get additional three minutes at the end. So we welcome you to the hearing of the public. We ask you to be respectful to those that are listening, to your families as well. And can you please start the hearing of the public? And our time, and everyone gets timed as well. And in addition, we don't answer questions till the end of the, to the end to mayor council reports as well. So if you have to leave during the hearing of the public and you want something answered and you don't get it by the end and you can't stay, just please email us, email our city manager at edome@eastpoint.org. Thank you. Now we will be opening the first part of the hearing of the public.
All right, we have Mary Hall Rayford, who would like to speak first.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Rayford. Let me give my time. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and residency, please.
Mary Hall Rayford, East Point. Good evening. I really just wanted to say thank you to Cardi, Harvey, and Sarah for their participation in the residents' town hall on Saturday. The residents thoroughly enjoyed it and I've received messages from quite a few of them eagerly anticipating the next one. So as soon as we set a date, I will certainly be getting in touch with you. And thank you once again for making that such a worthwhile endeavor.
Thank you. Thank you for participating in our hearing of the public. We have anybody else?
Yes, looks like Linda Flans would like to speak next.
Yes, good evening, Ms. Flans.
Hello, can, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. State your name and your residency, please.
Linda Flans, East Point, Michigan.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, um, the housing market has made a strong comeback in the last year. And I would like the city administration to give the residents an update on the number of registered rentals in the city as of January 2021, and what percentage it is of all the homes in the city. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. That's a good question. Thank you for participating in the hearing of the public. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have some of the building department staff that would like to speak next.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members and members of the public who are watching from home. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Erin Hardcastle and I have replaced Ms. Mary Van Herren as the Director of the Building Department. I understand, Council, that this evening you will be visiting the issue of the vehicles. And because it relates to my department and the function of my department, I would like to please take a quick moment of your time and bring some issues to your attention that have been voiced to me as far as items of concern from my staff and just in my own personal history, some issues that have been raised in these discussions that I would like to please relay to you for your consideration while you are reviewing this issue of the vehicle. As you know, being new, I don't have the benefit of having all of the history of what was involved in making the decisions as far as the oversight of our department. What I do know in this short time is that we had vehicles that were aged, that had been scheduled to be replaced, but that had been not replaced and extended in use to the point where some of them were in disrepair. The issues with the vehicles that were in our fleet prior to this recent change, I've had concerns relayed to me as far as comfort and safety in weather conditions. The replacement of the vehicles, while please forgive me, Council, I will just openly and honestly plead ignorance. I don't have the benefit of having the knowledge that you do about the history and why the decisions have been made as they do. In coming on to the department, I know that the new vehicles this, that are the subject of the item this evening for the, for consideration and a possible motion have raised a few different concerns. As you know, similar to our police department, part of our department does code enforcement, which includes issuing violations, writing tickets, and attending court on behalf of the city. Part of our department does rental inspections where they are out and visible in the city and also writing violations and doing follow-up. We are often approached when we're out in the field and visible with the vehicles as far as stewards for the city with questions about other issues. And this evening, I'd like to respectfully ask that the council consider a couple of issues that are primary to me as the department head. First and foremost would be the visibility of our staff in the field and throughout the city and their safety. You know, there's been a number of times where there's been concerns about impersonation or, you know, are we in fact who we are, which is why we have changed the outer, our jackets are identifiable and they're consistent in our department. Everybody wears one. Our ID badges always must be visible. The vehicles are often one of the things that residents look to, again, to identify us. So the vehicles are visible and, you know, are throughout the city. The biggest factor to me, though, Council, that I would like you to consider is the safety factor. You know, the, we have already had in using the vehicles, issues where my inspectors have been followed, they've been threatened, they've been in fear for their life. And, you know, as a coworker and, you know, just as an individual, I'm concerned for their safety. The idea that we would, you know, I know that the council will be considering a number of options this evening. One of them being bringing back the previous cars out of what I'll affectionately term retirement. The other possibly being the option of us using our personal vehicles. And for that, I would like you to please consider a couple of issues. First and foremost, the liability. Not all of us have the same insurance coverage. Some of us have PLPD, some of us do have full coverage. But the coverage term and the limits do not match what the city provides through the fleet vehicles, whatever the vehicle may be. There's an issue of when I call my insurance company and let them know that I will not only be using my vehicle for personal use, but I'll be using it in the course of my employment. That changes my policy. That will increase, of course, my insurance premium. But the concern after I have to absorb the deductible, if my car might be sideswiped while it's parked out in a street while I'm doing an inspection or, God forbid, I'm hit while I'm driving down Grashit, would be the matter of coverage. And that falling solely into mine and my family's lap. And I know my husband and children and I, particularly my husband and I, we can't absorb that risk. And it worries me that I would, that we might possibly put our staff in the position that they would have to have that same concern. The coverage, again, goes to the idea of the policy that the city provides us, lends its hand to being one of the tools that we use. Similar to the tool of the computer, the telephone, the vehicle enables us to be out in the community and doing what needs to be done.
Ms. Hardcastle? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that Ms. Hardcastle maybe could speak to the rest of what she's going to say when we have the discussion? Because I, I think that we could probably shorten some of what she's saying at that time.
I agree. Ms. Hardcastle, when we open that back up, when we get to that subject, because I see that this is going to be a little, a little long. You, once we get to the subject of the enterprise, you, I'll, I'll give you the floor to speak and extension to what you have to say. Right now, we don't want to take away from the residents and what they have to say right now. And then we'll let you get your chance when that topic comes up. Is that okay with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All you had to say something? How many isn't it?
Madam Mayor, um, we've got six of our staff here joining us this evening in our, in my office, and there may be some who are joining us from home as well, Mayor.
Okay, I appreciate that. But we, me as well as council probably would have liked to have got an email with your concerns and it would have helped us better address, you know, have a better idea of what the needs and stuff were. So we have a, you know, so you guys wouldn't have to have came and spoke. We, I always love when people have opinions and what they have to say, but just saying, getting your, your feedback would have helped us, you know, research concerning what you guys needed from us. You know, when we started doing, when we started doing, considering what people have to say and stuff, sometimes we like it better when you know what's on the agenda. And you guys pretty much knew this was coming up to let us know how you felt and what you wanted us to do. And so in our minds, while before this meeting came up, we have already in our minds what the thoughts of, not only what the residents needed, but as well as what you needed as employees from us. And so everything is not jumping on us at one time. So we just ask you in the future, if you have issues or anything like that, email us. You know, I'm always in my office. If you guys need to talk to me, council always is available to talk to on the phone or anything like that because what you have to say and what you need from us is important to us. But once we get to that subject coming up, we'll give you all a chance to say what you have to say. We don't want to, you know, stop you or knock you from, you know, saying what you need to say to us. So once we get there, I'll let you know. I'll open it back up and give you that on the floor, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We're still in the, in the hearing of the public, so any residents, business owners, or outside people that would like something to say, we open it back up to you. We haven't closed it. So do we have anyone else that has anything to say?
Taking a look now, Mayor. I don't see any, oh, Dory? Dory would like to speak next.
Okay, good evening, um, Dory. I can't say Mr. or Mrs. because I don't know, but good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Madam Mayor and City Council Members? My name is Dory Voskus Nolan, and I'm the Executive Director of CareHouse, the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center. Our main office is located in Mount Clemens, and we also have a satellite office in the city of Warren. CareHouse is the only agency in Macomb County that provides a comprehensive intervention, advocacy, and treatment response for child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, or for children who may have been a witness to a violent act, as well as their non-offending family members. Our goal is to minimize the trauma for child victims of abuse and to support the child victim and their family through the investigation and prosecution phases, and then provide support to help them through the healing process. We work with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County, Children's Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, and medical and mental health professionals. We know that talking about child sexual abuse is difficult and uncomfortable, but that unfortunately is a big part of the problem. We can't wish a wage child sexual abuse to pretend that it doesn't exist. The reality is that one in three, I'm sorry, one in 10 children will become victims of sexual abuse before they turn 18, which means that almost three children in every Michigan classroom and over 20,000 of all the children right here in Macomb County today are living with the trauma of sexual abuse. We know that these numbers are most likely much higher because unfortunately, most children never do tell. And living with child abuse is a reality for children of every race, gender, and economic status. Most of the parents who bring their kids to CareHouse often, I shouldn't say most, many, disclose that they too were sexually abused when they were kids, but never received any help for their trauma. And many of them never even told. The abuse of their children triggers all of those feelings and all of that trauma over again. So CareHouse works with all non-offending family members as a whole to promote healing. And after the forensic interview, CareHouse offers follow-up services for the child victims and their families, including crisis counseling, child safety assessments, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations. We have a family pantry with PPEs and baby items, cleaning supplies, holiday assistance for our families who are in need and struggling during the holidays, and referrals to other needy. Oh, okay. Let me get to the part you probably want to know. Families are never charged for any of the services that we do provide. So in 2019, we served 48 children who were residents of East Point. In 2020, we served 27 children. And this year, we are respectfully requesting consideration in the amount of $12,000 to support services for 20 child victims and their families. Of course, we'd be grateful for any amount you'd be able to allocate. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think we didn't open the scheduled hearings for the block grant, so that's probably when you would have came in. But thank you for the introduction, but if you want to speak on that part, I don't know if you have the agenda in front of you. So that's how we have it lined up. But thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was the block grant.
That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see now.
Couple minutes, so that's fine. And we thank you for your service in the community and what CARE has been doing all these years.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes, Linda Fending would like to speak next.
Hi, good evening. Please state your name and residency, please. Good evening.
Hi, Linda Fedon, Nicolai Avenue in East Point.
Yes, ma'am.
We on Nicolai are wondering, have anything been done to fix the sewer system to prevent our basements from flooding all the time? We have not heard anything back. The last thing we heard was that the city was going to scope out the system. We have not heard back.
We can't answer that, but, um, Ms. Dome, did you hear anything about that? I know we usually don't do it this way, but, um, did you get that reply from her, any email or anything?
I, I believe I did. I know I did have a request about Nicolai and I forwarded it to our Public Works Department. So I will double check and see where we are with that, if they are scoping it out. I do know we are going to be going out for bid for a lot of scoping of our sewers, and that will happen eventually. And when I say eventually, I do mean I would assume this year. I believe, well, we'll leave it at that. I will get with Darren, who is the Acting Director of Public Works. And I'll reach back out to a resident.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for tuning in. I think I just did that whole thing real quick because sometimes when a resident speaks, sometimes we forget what they ask us, and I want to hit you with it real quick, Ms. Dome.
Okay, we just want answers because, you know, every other year we get a bad flood in our basements and it's becoming very costly.
I understand. I used to have floods in my basements too when I first moved here in East Point. So I know that is very important. You have valuables down there and I understand, so.
We're more concerned at this point, too, because of the new housing project lying in at the end of the street, which will tax the system even more.
And, well, please email us with that again, please, and of course, we're going to be back. Thank you so much for attending and stay till the end if you like, please, and keep smiling. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ma'am. You have anyone else?
I will click through and check now. We just have one person logging back on. I'm not sure if she's planning to speak.
Okay, thank you.
I do not see any other people, no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And now the first hearing of the public is closed. We're going to go to approval of the minutes.
And I'm there. I would move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting for January 19th, 2021.
For?
Move in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is a scheduled hearing for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Fund Allocation. I'm going to just read a little bit of this. The, we annually are required to do a public hearing, which must be conducted prior to the city council making its decision on how to allocate upcoming year's 2021 program. And this is, we have a recommendation on how to allocate up to $150,000 in the bricks and mortar, its potential funding, and also an amount available of $23,600 for public services activity. And so we have the information for CareHouse. Do we have any other nonprofits out there that would like to speak at this moment?
Hi, my name is. Don't go right ahead, I'll wait.
Hi, my name is Heather Topic. I am a child therapist from Turning Point. I am here as a representative for our shelter program tonight to request $8,250 in community block grant money from East Point to assist in the provision of shelter services for survivors and their families of domestic and sexual violence from East Point. Turning Point has been part of the community for over 40 years. We are a domestic and sexual violence support organization inside of Macomb County. Turning Point Shelter provides emergency shelter to East Point residents when fleeing violence in their homes. In the fiscal year 2020, Turning Point provided 232 shelter bed nights to eight East Point survivors, and this also included six children. During those bed nights, it cost Turning Point approximately $7,500. We provided shelter, basic needs. Some examples of this include clothing, diapers, school supplies, anything that the children or women need, meals, crisis intervention, case management, children's supportive services and advocacy, program advocacy, and support groups. In addition, Turning Point provided the following services to East Point residents. 67 individuals received help with PPO filings. 25 people received counseling and advocacy services. Two people received legal advocacy assistance. Seven East Point survivors received forensic nurse exams following a sexual assault. Seven East Point survivors received crisis intervention, information, and referrals from our first response team following a sexual assault. And 109 East Point callers received assistance through Turning Point's 24-hour crisis hotline. Even during COVID, we are offering a comprehensive array of services. All of our services are free of charge to our survivors. We offer a 24/7, 365-day shelter, um, and, I'm sorry, hotline and shelter. Home-based community housing advocacy for residents who are leaving shelter. Individual and group counseling for both the women and the children. Assistance with filing PPOs, forensic nurse exams to survivors of sexual assault, legal advocacy and personal protection orders, prevention education. And we also have a resale shop called Secondhand Rose, which assists survivors with clothing for that are, that's free of charge as well. Instead of asking for funding support, I would rather be here to inform you that there is no longer violence within the homes of residents in East Point, Macomb County. Unfortunately, Turning Point's 24-hour crisis line and the fact that our shelter is full most of the time demonstrates daily that family violence continues, contributes to homelessness, and that our services are greatly needed. Turning Point's commitment to ending domestic and sexual violence cannot happen without the support of our community. Please help us maintain this crucial and viable service by supporting the continuation of grant funding support. If awarded the $8,250 requested in East Point, Turning Point will be able to provide approximately 275 nights of shelter to those who identify themselves as East Point residents. Thank you again for the opportunity to address the council and your consideration in providing part of the solution for a community response to domestic and sexual violence. Does anybody have any questions at this time?
No, ma'am. We don't have any questions, but do council, do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Welcome. Who do we have next? I think we have Wigs for Kids, one of the nonprofits in St. Clair Shores. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Barney. I'm the founder and CEO of Wigs for Kids. Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight. My associate is Jennifer Fisher. She's our Director of Development. We're going to co-present with her. So we just wanted to tell you a little bit about Wigs for Kids. Most of all, thank you for supporting us in the past for many years. You guys have helped us. We serve it for 11 families. So we're here to make a thousand dollars for a child, because that's what it actually costs to provide to the children. And the family, too.
You can barely, you can barely hear you. Y'all might get in a better location? No, you can turn it back on. We can barely hear you.
Can you hear?
You can hear it, but it's cutting up a little bit. It's kind of choppy.
Now you're muted.
She's muted now.
Now you're muted. Now we can't hear you at all.
Is that better? We just turned it all the way up.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Understood. Go ahead. Okay. Thank you very much for allowing us to present this evening. I would like to share a very exciting update about Maggie's Wigs for Kids in Michigan. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic, we were able to open our brand-new wellness center in St. Clair Shores in June of 2020, and we are still servicing the kids in Michigan. We are providing wig consultations onsite and also with the eight hospitals in Michigan that provide pediatric oncology services. We're able through Zoom to measure a child's head size with the help of nurse navigators and child life specialists so that we can order the child's wig during COVID while they're still in the hospital. And then the child, when they're released, can come out to our wellness center and receive their wig. It'll be ready as soon as they're released from the hospital. So we're still providing all of our wigs and support services. Even our classes are being hosted through Zoom and social groups for the kids to help them because, as you know, COVID required so many of us to isolate. And our kids are already doing that when they experience their loss. And that's not good for a child or a teen, but those are difficult ages to go through as it is, especially with a health challenge. And so it helps and we can continue to provide these services that assist them emotionally, socially, and psychologically to heal with their peers who've gone through similar health challenges and their families. Our program is open to the entire family, whether grandma or grandpa want to speak to our social worker or the parents or the siblings are having a hard time while the child is going through their health challenge. We are here to help. So if there are any East Point residents... So if there are any East Point residents out there that need our services, we do ask that you refer them to us. We help everyone. We charge nothing. We turn no one away. We've been providing all of our services at no charge for eighteen years. And if they'd like to get in touch with us, they can call five eight six seven seven two six six five six or visit us online. We have our website, www.wigforkids.org with the number four. And we do a little presence on social media. So if anybody out there who's listening to us would like to donate their hair or volunteer their time, become a corporate sponsor or assist in another way, then more than welcome to check us out and reach out to us there as well.
Thank you so much and thank you for the service you have done in East Point and throughout McComb County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
We have one question for them.
Okay.
Just, I was just wanting to clarify how much they were asking for because they kind of broke up like during that time.
Okay.
Thousand dollars.
We have serviced eleven children in East Point and we're asking for a thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
But we've serviced forty-eight hundred children throughout the state of Michigan.
Yes.
Most of them from the tri-county area too.
Yes.
And any, I invite any and all of you, if you're ever in the neighborhood, just knock on our door. We keep the doors locked now because of COVID. But knock on our door and please come by and take a tour of our facility and see the great work that we're doing here. We provide so much more than just the wigs for these children to really give them hope and healing as they're going through their process. And we couldn't do it without the kindness and generosity of all the communities. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Um, council, any questions? Saying none. Thank you so much. Any one else want to speak at this time at this scheduled hearing for the community block grant?
Um, yes, Mayor. My name is Scott Andrews and I'm a Client Services Coordinator. I work for interfaith volunteer caregivers. We have a request before you. Um, first off, thank you to the mayor and the city council members for allowing us to address you. At times like these, having public servants such as yourselves representing others uh is just a wonderful thing in this crazy day and age. Um, for our organization, with the number of older adults in McComb County rapidly increasing, the need for them to have support services due to frailty of age, chronic health conditions or disabilities is growing dramatically and will continue to do so well into the future. Uh, the Interfaith Volunteer Care Givers Program has been providing chore and repair services on a smaller scale for many years. But over the last five years, our request for CDBG funding has allowed us to increase the number of residents that we can reach. Uh, we are hopefully confident that the addition of funding through CDBG program for the various cities and townships will allow us to grow these services each year and begin reaching more and more struggling individuals uh in need of the support we can offer. Such help that our volunteers are able to give these senior residents can really be the difference that allows uh the older and disabled neighbors to remain safe at home, which is the name of our program. Um, on a personal level, our, myself and our office, we appreciate the partnership we've had uh with the city of East Point over the past five years and hope that you will continue uh to look at our program favorably. Uh, the request we have before you is for twenty-two hundred dollars. Um, and last year you were very generous in what was contributed. Uh, that would allow us to help thirty different seniors um in the city of East Point with uh chores and small minor house repairs they may need. But being honest, any amount you could do is fine. And I actually ran the numbers and saw that you uh, you have double the amount of CDBG requests uh that you have money for. So any contribution you can make would be great and I can answer questions if you have it about our safe at home program for IBC.
Any questions, council? Saying none. Um, thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else at this time? Yeah, I believe we make our decision February the sixteenth, but we opened it up so that we can hear from all nonprofits or and things like that to let the residents know what we're using this money for and what services that you guys uh do in the city of East Point that they may not know that, you know, you provide and that we um, you know, continuously help to fund. So thank you for being here tonight. Um, now that the scheduled hearing is now closed, uh we'll see you February the sixteenth. So you can know uh how much will be allocated to you all and thank you again for being here tonight. Moving right along to unfinished business. We're doing the second reading and adoption ordinance number twenty-one dash one two zero eight to man, chapter ten, administration, article ten, medical marijuana facilities of the city of East Point Code of Ordinances, council.
Sure. Man, Mayor, I'll motion that we give second reading to an adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve oh eight, which amounts chapter ten, administration, article ten, uh medical marijuana facilities of the city of East Point Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Motion support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah.
Mayor Owens?
No. Moving right along to item B under unfinished business discussion and possible motion to the enterprise lease agreement. And we're gonna give the floor to our building department.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just real quick before we go forward with hearing um everyone from the building department. The reason why earlier when Mrs. Hardcastle was speaking is I wanted to clarify something. I mean, we've had multiple discussions in regards to the enterprise and what we're going to do with these cars. And I don't think any of us have ever, at least us on council, including you, you know, yourself as the mayor, have ever said that we were interested in having the employees use their own cars. So I, I don't want them to think that that is an option that we're considering because I don't think that was an option that any of us were considering have happened. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. I don't know if any of you guys disagree with that statement that I'm making before they speak. I would just hate to waste a lot of time them defending not wanting to use their own vehicles because I totally agree and understand with them why they wouldn't want to use those.
I think some of that conversation is part of what you said, but it sounded like also in addition, they wanted to keep the rental cars because they, some of them be uh, they're more professional. Um, they don't want to go back to the old cars because they're not working and people uh harass them and things like that. They want to have good dependable cars, especially in weather like this. I think they always also was talking about um.
No. Madam Mayor, I agree. No, I'm fine with them speaking about that. It's just a part of them using their own cars. They don't need, you know what I'm saying? That's.
They don't want to talk about that. Okay.
I'm just saying is I don't think that was ever part of our, our discussion.
No, it was not.
Okay, well, since it was one of the items, that's why they're bringing it up, so.
Yeah, that wasn't an item that we requested. Administration just added that item on there.
Okay. And moving right along, Ms. Hardcastle and the building department.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, and thank you council members for um your consideration this evening. I'll do my best not to take up much of your time. Um, again, I just wanted to relate to you. Um, you know, coming forward as a, a new member of the group, uh I've got a very passionate team um that I know works diligently and does their best on a day-to-day basis uh trying to address the issues in the city. Um, and I know uh this is um at your discretion uh how you choose to move forward with the vehicle issue. Um, I'm hoping that you will see it again as just another tool that we need to do our job and to be able to perform. Um, I'm very appreciative that you are um open. There was a great concern about the um and fear, uh just to speak honestly, because of the atmosphere or the climate right now, um where, you know, there's a lot of emotions and, and um, you know, we've had some contentious interactions in the field. Our concern about driving our own vehicles or the idea of having um our tools, for lack of a better term, taken away from us to be able to get out into the city um and do the best that we can to do our jobs. Um, I, I would respectfully ask that you consider, and again, I apologize, council. Um, I didn't have the benefit of um being able to listen and learn along with you. And um, you know, will admit, I know very little about the history and certainly um not much at all about the leasing agreement. It's just my understanding and I did take the opportunity because um I want to get a feel for the pulse of the community and what we need. I uh was able to tune in and watch Ms. Rayford, Ms. Hall Rayford's um meeting and I understood that some of the concerns that were relayed by our residents uh were the idea that these vehicles, this fleet was purchased during a pandemic. And um for those of you who are watching, I know City Hall was closed for a period of two weeks while um there were a number of us that were positive and, and were suffering from the symptoms of COVID. Um, but aside from that and the short period before that where City Hall was closed, um, our department truly is considered essential workers, just like our police and our fire and our DPW workers. We're out in the field on a day-to-day basis. Um, you know, I'm grateful that while we have this strong COVID policy in place, that I do have staff that are willing to uh get out in the field and interact with people. Um, you know, and potentially expose themselves uh but do it on a day-to-day basis and be mindful and careful of themselves and the residents that we interact with. Um, I just would hope that you consider in, in your discussion and in your motion, I know that you're looking for a resolution to satisfy concerns that are outside of the scope and beyond our department. Um, but I again would ask that you consider the safety of our officers and our inspectors. Um, I know the idea that the, you know, why would have, one of the comments that I heard and it struck a chord to me. And so I'd just like to share that uh with all of you this evening is, you know, the comment, why would they purchase vehicles during a pandemic? And because um, you know, just like our police and fire and DPW, we are out in the field working every day as essential workers. Um, the pandemic, uh you know, while it affected us all in different ways and caused a struggle, um that didn't negate the need for our fire department to have to come forward and ask for um the tools that they needed, nor would it negate our DPW uh acting director from coming forward and asking for the tools that his department needs. Um, you know, I'm mindful of and absolutely uh we would drive whatever vehicle provided. Uh, we're not, uh and I, I hope, I please don't want to be coming across as disrespectful in any, any sort of way. Uh, just asking that you please consider our safety and um, you know, the, the liability and the other concerns I touched upon earlier in the hearing of the public. I won't repeat them. Um, I know that uh I was thankful that you were all listening. And if I may, Madam Mayor, I have, um, as I shared with you earlier, some of my staff who have asked to please be able to weigh in and um be considered before the council moves forward with making a motion, if that's acceptable to you.
Acceptable to me, but we, I, I ask you uh to make it short. Usually uh we ask the director to speak on behalf of the department. So in the future, let, you know, the people you work with give the, the comments and, you know, opinions to you and you just put it all in the, in the executive summary and just give it to us and you represent the needs and what they want to say. So um please, I just ask you to make it short so we can uh conduct uh and continue uh other official business. And um, because I know some of the residents want to get to bed and sleep. So um, please state your name. Who, who do we have next? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anna Mayor, can, can I make one comment before we move on?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I mean, if, if, if Ms. Hardcastle's any indication here, I think at least my intention here was to talk about just um a high-level view of what we wanted to do with the cars because th- these cars were leased without city council's knowledge was the whole reason we have it on here. Not that we don't want cars or anything like, like a lot of these concerns. I think we all want to make sure we have employees that are safe and all that. But I guess my intention was that we, we give somewhat of a vague motion tonight to Ms. Doom and she, I think she should address all of these items from the building department with them. Not like this isn't, you know, council's purview. This would be more of a management thing. We make sure we do that. I, you know, I, I was thinking of looking this at more of a high-level standpoint. I think some of us don't want leased vehicles. We'd rather buy them, uh, you know, fiscally speaking and that sort of thing. And, and we can be in the same situation in terms of cars, but you know, I guess if these concerns are, you know, I, I, I have a feeling they're not going to be about that though. I think this is my, my thought.
I mean, they took their time out today to um actually speak. I'm gonna give them their opportunity. And so they've been dealing with a lot and, you know, so they took time out to speak and uh and be with us tonight. I'm gonna give them their opportunity. It doesn't happen often. You, I know you put it on the agenda, so since you put it on the agenda, you're gonna open it up and let them speak. So um, who, who do we have first? And please make it brief.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm Michael Regaro. I'm a code enforcement officer for three and a half years. And I, I, I'm really glad to hear that you're not gonna consider us using our own vehicles. I did want to discuss the little white vehicles a little bit if anybody's unconvinced to how dangerous and uncomfortable they are. I could tell you that while using those vehicles, I had to go to the chiropractor three times a week. It's like uh riding in the center seat of a airplane for six hours and not have any room to, you can't even hardly turn in them. You know, none of us are real small people. And uh, we, you know, the, the code enforcement officers spend five or six hours a day in the vehicle. And they also, they sit so low to the ground, we can't really see the property properly to do our job properly. Um, we didn't necessarily need the fanciest vehicle in the world, but we, we needed something different than those white vehicles. So I, I, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
All righty. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. That was short and sweet. Do we have someone else that would like to speak?
Yep, someone else is coming.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Cynthia Davis and I'm one of the code enforcement officers as well, as well as one of the uh citizens here in the city of East Point. I reside in the city. Um, and I've been working with the city at East Point close to eight years now. And um, so I'm quite familiar with the city as well as with some residents as well. Um, so in two thousand thirteen, uh, we were driving the old black and white uh vehicles, which were handed down from the police department with our prior maintenance issues. Uh, we then received the small white vehicles, uh which uh after a few years started experiencing mechanical problems. Um, I personally uh experienced my vehicle shutting off while driving. Um, as well as uh if I turned the vehicle off, I couldn't get it to start back up. Um, we also spent a lot of time um being stuck during the, during the winter season uh as well as the vehicles were so small, it was hard to maneuver uh in them while we were in them. Um, I'm not gonna really go into uh as far as the, when, when we talked about uh the uh new vehicles being that uh one of the council members mentioned that it, us using our personal vehicles is not an issue, so I'm not going to touch on that. But I would like to just say again that what we do as code enforcement officers, uh again, we make sure that we are visible daily and uh we take pride in maintaining the city uh in a safe, you know, to um maintaining a clean, clean and safe environment for the city here for the citizens of uh East Point.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off short because I asked you, because I wanted to be very brief because I think uh the director of departments uh said aloud on your behalf, I just want you to speak your own truth. But I wanted it short. You, you started all the way two thousand thirteen. I was like, oh, so uh, but thank you.
But thank you. Okay.
Thank you so much. Because I know you guys uh leave at four o'clock and for you guys to, you know, stand by and um want to say what you need to say to us. I, I, I want to give you that time. Did you have anybody else before? I don't want to cut anybody off. I just wanted to make sure that it was really brief. What you had to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for that. Um, our other employees are uh being mindful of your request to keep it short, uh and so they'll forego their time. And thank you so much again for um giving me an opportunity to speak with you this evening. And going forward, I will definitely uh do better to try and communicate. So thank you.
Yes, and we want to let the know, uh, let the employees know that they can contact uh us as council um as well. When you have, you know, when you have these problems, you don't have to wait till a council meeting to address us. We're, we live in a city too and you give us the same services as well, so we're not above you. So just please So just please contact us, let us know, because you, you service, you know, me and my family. So let me know what your needs are, uh, beforehand. And, um, I'll do my very best to make sure that you have what you need as well as council. I know Mr. DeMonico put this, uh, on the agenda. I should open it up with that. Mr. DeMonico, did you have any more things you want to address?
Well, if anyone else in council wanted to say something just at the beginning here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may, real quick. First of all, I mean, thank you to the building department for coming out to speak tonight, even though it, you know, puts us in an awkward situation, because the, the issue or the concern isn't the fact that we did not want to get new cars for code enforcement. It's not where our concern is. Our concern is the way this happened and the way this came about. And I think that it was budgeted for next year for us to consider purchasing new cars. And if this needed to be done sooner, we would have possibly did it this year, who would have brought to us. Then we could have had the discussions on how we wanted to go about doing it. It was just the fact that it was kind of forced upon us that this is on the agenda. We want our employees just to be safe. We want them to, you know, feel comfortable when they're out there on the road. We do realize that they are all frontline workers. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
The only, the only other thing, uh, Madam Mayor, is that during during our discussion, it may be right at the top, I think in our packet, uh, from the administration, I think they said there were three alternatives. And, uh, probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we have the administration, whoever wrote that, be the one to publicly talk about what they thought the three alternatives are. Unless the rest of council has something that would be shorter that we could talk about, but.
Yes, um, that's why, that's why I opened it up to Mr. DeMonico and see what he wanted directed to. You wanted me to, uh, talk, you want to go ahead in and talk about the options? I'm gonna go right to that.
No, I, 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 I don't have a problem with, with Cardi speaking first. And if I, if I don't like what he said, then I'll find out what the three alternatives are.
Yeah, I guess I can keep it, uh, very short, actually, I guess. Um, well, first of all, we didn't, a lot of these issues, we, we didn't know about till today even. So we didn't talk, you know, we, we haven't discussed them at all. But essentially what I'm just looking at is, it, it, to me, it seems fiscally more responsible to own these cars than to lease them. So I'm just looking to, my idea is that we, we buy these code enforcement vehicles, and I'd like to see them electric, at least all of them eventually. You probably all saw that, you know, GM's only gonna be making electric cars soon enough, you know, in 2035. Um, I think the city should be, you know, doing that sort of thing. But that, that was it. I guess I would just like to see us not leasing these vehicles and buying them. We can transition in to doing that. We don't have to like do it immediately. And maybe we can use a few of the old Ford Fiesta's as a transition. You know, if somebody does want to use them or can use them, or this is where I think Ms. Doom could give us a suggestion. So I guess my overall thought was just, I, I would like to see us owning all the vehicles, and I'd like to see us transition them all to electric. You know, I don't know if we do three of them each year, um, since there's nine of them, and just like handle it like that. And, you know, if Ms. Doom could come forward with a suggestion, and if there's an electric vehicle that's a little bigger than another one, you know, suggest that one so that everyone's comfortable. You know, I'd like to see everyone safe, like they're saying, and all that. And I, I guess that's really about it. I sent some of this info to Ms. Doom already about a SEMCO webinar I was on the other day with the, the state is happy to help move electric, move your whole fleet electric also. So, um, I guess that's about it. I think that, that's at least a discussion I would have had before we even bought all these cars. You know, council didn't even know that we leased all these cars. So I guess that's about where I'm at. I don't, I don't even think I've, I don't need to hear all the options, you know, I reviewed them unless, you know, if someone does want Mr. Blum to review them, that, that's fine, but I, I'm good without hearing.
Councilman Crowley?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, I, 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 I like what Cardi said, Councilman, Councilman DeMonico. Anyway, uh, to keep the cars that we got and, uh, eventually trade, like you said, maybe three a year and get electric cars. If we're going to be concerned about the environment, uh, and if they drive these cars five, six, seven hours a day, and they're gas guzzlers, um, obviously we're polluting the air, um, every day, times how many cars we got out there. So, um, yeah, I don't need the three alternatives read. Uh, thank you so much. But, uh, I like the idea that this, you know, this whole thing has been around us for a long time. And I think tonight we need to, we need not to get off it until we've agreed and a majority of the council to decide what to do. But, uh, if someone were to say that I would move to keep the cars and, and have our, direct our city manager to investigate buying electric cars a few at a time, I would, I would like that.
Madam Mayor.
So, um, yeah, and if we need to keep some of these right now, because some of our Fiesta's are out of commission, I would be okay with that, you know, while we move into this transition also.
Okay. You have our finance director. He deals with the money and he was a part of this, uh, transition when we dealt with enterprise and also, um, knows about the options and what's the better, uh, option that we should choose as, uh, as a, as a city. Mr. Blum, the evening.
Oh, you're muted. Can't hear you.
Yeah, just unmuted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Maybe I talked before the button clicked. Anyways, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. As far as the options that were presented, uh, one was just to approve the five-year leases that we already have in place, sell all of the, uh, the Fiesta's. Another option was to wait the six months for the penalties to go away and then buy the vehicles directly from enterprise, again, selling all the Fiesta's. And then the other option was return the, uh, vehicles to enterprise, bring back the, uh, the white cars, and then purchase, um, five vehicles per year over the next two years. The, the only problem with that particular one is we're already down two vehicles. We need one at DPW and then the, uh, one Charger at City Hall that's, um, gone. So we would actually need to buy two immediately, um, and then we could deal with the rest later.
So what's our better option is what I'm asking you, and what's the better option?
Yeah, in my opinion.
Your opinion?
Nice.
Since you, since you deal with all, most of our contracts and deal with millions of our dollars, you tell us what's the best opinion.
I, I, I still think the five-year lease is the best option at this point. And then, um, if council wanted to move towards, uh, a different type of vehicle, at the end of the five years, we'd be ready for it. I mean, you're talking, uh, right now, the cost of electric vehicle without tax credits that we don't get because we're not a taxable entity is very expensive. In five years, the cost of electric vehicle might be affordable. We also don't have charging stations. We have one. So we can't have, um, you know, nine code enforcement vehicles that are, are electric until we get new charging stations, which again, there, there's grants out there, but it still takes time to do that. The simplest and cleanest way is just to do the five-year lease, let it run its course, and plan five years from now for alternative options.
Do we save more money that way or we don't? Tell me how much money do we save doing it the way you're saying? Compared to the other ones, how much money, what's, how much money do we save compared to buying them?
Right now, I would say it's about, um, the other two options are both about 20,000 more over the five years than just letting the leases run out. So, and, and the cash flow, we, we actually have a better cash flow with the lease instead of buying the vehicles upfront, just paying the lease over the five years, so.
So you don't think buying those, you don't think buying those cars was, we would save more money owning them than, um, than leasing them? Is that what you're saying?
Not with the lease price we have, no. I don't believe so.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, since we have already, um, since we have already initiated the lease, then if that's gonna save the city money, then we need to just write out that lease to save the city money. And after the five years, uh, within the five years, we can actually see the grants to start, um, getting more plugs for electrical cars to prepare the spot for them. But that would be more cost efficient.
Yeah, then the research, uh, I agree. The research, uh, will be more, you know, will be done more about electrical cars and we can see where our funding is. So, um, we're talking, we, we're discussing about things that we don't know anything about. And we're talking about electric and we don't have any place to put it, we don't know the cost. And I don't like, um, agreeing to stuff that we don't know how to, uh, we don't know the cost too. But the idea of saving our environment and things like that and saving money is good, but if we don't do the research, then we don't know what we're talking about. So, um, saying that, um, of course, and then by that time, once we do the research and things are, you know, popular, they have grants and things like that. Right now, like Mr. Blum said, we don't. So I know Mr. DeMonico is into all that. Maybe he can find some grants for us about, you know, on that. Because I know he does a lot of research on certain things. So let's move right along and, um, and do this vote so we can move right along.
Now, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I would like to hear comments from our city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Doom?
Yes, absolutely. Um, Mr. DeMonico did send me, uh, some very interesting reading from SEMCO. And we've had a discussion about the electric cars and how the batteries already, the new batteries are changing and evolving to the point that, in the very near future, we will be able to use them for all-day use with a, you know, very quick charge. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. So looking at all of the costs, I agree with Mr. Blum that the best course of action for the city is to continue with the lease. Uh, one thing he did, did not mention was that the lease cost also includes maintenance on the vehicles. So if there's any issues with these vehicles, we have, uh, repair that is covered by this lease. Whereas if we own them out right now, we'd have to leave additional funds to, um, have them repaired when they need it. Like, take for instance, the little white cars. We have five transmissions go out on them. We have currently three of them with engine knocks. One's starting to go a little bit bad. They're really getting old. These are all covered while those cars are under lease. So we know that we've got the safety for our employees and we've got cars that are being maintained on a regular schedule. And we don't have enough mechanics that we could simply say, we'll take them over to Public Works and have the mechanics work on them. They are struggling to get their work done on, you know, their maintenance on the big trucks. So, um, all around, it, it is the best thing. Um, I would have to agree with Mr. Blum at this time to continue with the leases. But then look into how the electric cars are evolving to the point that we might be able to be eligible for some discounts and grants. I know, uh, as, as Mr. DeMonico had mentioned, the article that we both had read, you know, the state is willing to begin funding for, um, charging stations. There's going to be grants for that, so that's definitely worth looking into at this point. And then going forward.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving right along? Yes, Councilman Crowley.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm not trying to hog the whole conversation. But, uh, Randy, you said that two of the vehicles are out of service, are they need servicing? Is that what you said?
There, there were 10 vehicles leased. One is for DPW, which was for the new employee, the engineer, whatever that was. And there was no vehicle available, so we would need one there. And then we had a old police charger that died about four months ago. That, uh, that has, we would need a vehicle for that one immediately too. And then whenever the other three engine knock ones die on us.
So none of the, none of the cars that we have now, the black cars, need, need repairing.
Correct.
They're all working perfectly.
Yep.
And, uh, and as the city manager said, uh, Madam Mayor, that, uh, the, the electrical chargers, I, I, I don't know what we paid for that one out in the parking lot. And I don't know how often it's used, but, uh, I don't think, I don't think, uh, the worrying about electrical chargers should have, should be an issue. City manager is right, there's, there's grants out there and, uh, I don't think we have to worry about that. But the, the whole country wants you to go electric, right? They don't want you to use gas, gas cars. So I think we could get, we could get the chargers at no cost. I really believe that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So for the leased vehicles though, so we're talking the, these different options where you're saying even, which, I mean, this isn't a fair discussion because this was all bought without our knowledge anyway. So right now, I'd say we've spent 190 grand that was never approved, uh, over the next five years. But the 190 you're saying we spend, we end the five years without owning a single car. Your second option that costs 215 grand, we end five years owning every car, right?
Yes, we would own them, um, at the end of five years, you know, we could sell them, trade them in, whatever.
And they'd be worth more than $20,000, 10 cars. So I guess what I'm saying.
Five years, you would hope so.
Yeah, well, if we're leasing these vehicles for five years, but the vehicle we're leasing, you know, lasts, you know, say it doesn't have any major problems for 10 years, right? You know, it's gonna cost double to lease it for 10 years as opposed to buy it and it lasts 10 years, right?
Uh, if, if it were to last 10 years, yes. The, the way they're driven, um, it's not like you're doing freeway driving. That's actually the best kind of driving for a car. This putzing around town, stopping, starting, the slow drives, that actually puts a lot of wear and tear on the engines, which is one of the reasons the Fiesta's are having issues. So I, I actually believe my vehicle maintenance costs might be a little bit conservative on the, what it will be. We, we have, we've seen it with everything from the, uh, the police chargers that we took over to the, the Fiesta's that we bought. It's just the, the type of driving that's done as people are puttering around town looking for code violations. But, you know, it, it's all speculation at this point because we, we don't know what it's gonna cost.
Okay, well, Madam Mayor, I guess, um, I, I'd just be happy to make a motion, I guess, at this point then. And just see where, see where we go from there.
Yes, please.
Um, so let's see, um, Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion that we ask the city manager to, so just to put a plan together, nothing set in stone at this moment, to end all the leases and buy the cars over the next, let's say, three years, three cars a year. Maybe throw that DPW car in at some point and buy electric vehicles and put in electric charging stations. I think that's about everything. And then bring that to either like the next council meeting or council meeting after, uh, a rough plan of how we could do that. And I think the one other thing was, uh, we could wait the, we don't have, I think, Mr. Blum, right? The sixth, if we wait six months, we don't have that, um, that fee, I think.
Right, the penalty is gone after, uh, six months. And that's, that's only factored into one of the scenarios. The, the buyout one, it's not, it's already assuming we wait six months.
Okay. So that's my motion.
That emotion on the floor, do I have support?
I'll support that motion.
Okay, motion and support, please follow the roll.
No, 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 Madam Mayor, I, I have, I have a ton of questions.
Oh, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, first of all, I, I'm, I'm gonna vote yes on the motion. Randy, I guess this question would be to you. We're gonna end up buying the cars, and I think Cardi, the motion, and whoever wrote the motion down, let's repeat it before we vote, uh, that we would buy the cars. Once we buy the cars, we would do the maintenance in-house and probably, Randy?
Uh, it would depend on the mechanic's availability. We've, we've taken it to service, uh, stations around to have work done before. I mean, if you're middle of a, a snowstorm or getting ready for winter plowing, our mechanics don't have time for DPW or, um, code enforcement cars. They're, they're dealing with the big trucks. Um, but yes, if they have the time, we would take it in-house. Uh, if they don't, we would go out to, um, Slims or somebody like that.
Yeah, listen, listen, guys. Our mechanics are 110% knowledgeable over the DPW. They're fantastic guys. If they can fix those great big enormous plows, they can fix a car. I'm telling you right now that in-house would be no problem whatsoever, so I would. that in-house would be no problem whatsoever, so I would hope that our first choice would be to take the cars to DPW. Hey, you know, it's leaking gas, oh, or leaking oil, all right, we don't need to send it out to a repair shop and pay four or five times the amount of money that we would if our own people repaired it. So I would just letting the administration know how I feel about in-house repair, okay? All right, Madam Mayor, I feel like I'm really jabbering tonight, so I apologize, so I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, and motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
So right now, we're, we're speculating and we're hoping that nothing goes wrong with these cars, once we buy them. Because once we buy them, then it will be ours to fix over the next five years.
Correct.
Were you asking?
No.
Mayor Owens? No, I'm gonna tell you why cars have, don't have any value, once you drive it off the lot, they decrease in value. So now we're talking about buildings or ownership, then I would, uh, say something else, but cars depreciate once you drive it off the lot, so we're losing money once we buy these cars, so no.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Well, then, moving right along to reports from administration. We're gonna start with our city manager, Ms. Doom, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we'll start out with, uh, some of you may have seen that we have two American flags flying at City Hall, and that was a question posed to me by Mr. Curly earlier today. So I do have an answer for Mr. Curly and the public, is that, uh, we do have a city flag which is on order and should be in and installed very quickly. So rather than leave an empty flag pole, it was, uh, our Public Works decision to put two American flags, so I guess we're doubly patriotic, uh, until our flag comes in. Uh, we often hear things, I, you know, I hear people speaking on, uh, this meeting and they don't know who to reach out to, and I thank you, Madam Mayor, for, um, encouraging people to reach out to me. It doesn't matter what your question is, if you reach out to me, look it up, we can look us, you know, up on the internet, you can call, um, of course, as you've mentioned before, it's E D O O M at eastpointcity.org. Uh, send those questions to me, send your concerns to me. We've had concerns about snow plowing being sent, we've had concerns about water bills, and I try and respond to every one of those folks, and then at the same time, I will direct them to the department that can help them best, so they hear from us and they also then hear from the director, so, uh, so people who, you know, think, well, I don't know who to contact, that's okay. Even if you contact the wrong department, we will see to it that the right department gets the, the question or the information or can help people. So, um, one of the things I want to encourage, and I might sound like a broken record, but I encourage people to please come to our Facebook site and to the city, East Point City's, uh, webs, webpage. We are sharing as much information as we can about icy weather, about water main breaks, uh, COVID updates, we share links to help businesses on any type of loans that come uh, forward, and we welcome people to share that information, put that on your own page. Uh, there are other community pages, we, we love to have that shared, so as much information can get out. But if you're concerned about snowstorms, if you're concerned about a lot of things, come to our Facebook page. If you don't see that we've posted something for you, we have, you're able to ask questions right through our page, you send us a message. We are monitoring that on a daily basis, we will get back to you as quickly as we can, usually within a few hours, unless, of course, you're one of those peoples up all night long and you, uh, send us a message at two in the morning, as some people do, it'll take just a little bit longer. So, um, we just want people to recognize that we have really worked hard as a city to bring information to our community, and we could keep doing that. Um, and so that's my message for tonight, is that we are here to help the community. We're here to be of assistance to you, the council, and just, uh, I, I couldn't be more proud of our departments because everyone is stepping up and sharing all that information and trying to address any questions people have the same day if possible, so, thank you very much, that's my report.
So much, I know a lot of residents, they contact me, and then I would send it to you, because I know you would send it to the appropriate uh, department, and you also CC me to let me know that you're doing what I asked you to do, so. Sure, I appreciate that as well, um, I would like to have a question on, um, as far as our, our safety and, um, crime in our city, so do you have any updates on that?
I don't have updates at my fingertips, um, only because I'm working on my laptop and I don't have two screens. I will, however, if you don't mind, I'll ask Mr. Rohib to jump in just to give you a brief overview of what's been happening this, since our last council meeting.
Sounds good, good evening, Director.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, actually, knock on wood, it's been very quiet. We're just in the process of hiring police officers and, uh, we're gonna order a fire truck this week. We're looking at hiring a new animal control officer, we have over, I believe, over twenty-six applications, we had our oral boards today for the positional lieutenant, so a lot of administrative work is being done, but, you know, all in all, uh, right now it's been very quiet and, uh, and I just wanna, you know, tell the public to join the Place and Fire Facebook page also, because we place our monthly stats on there every month, and also our crime rate, so um, it's very informative, if, uh, especially if there's a certain crime in a neighborhood, we, we're pretty good about putting things out like that, so.
Thank you so much, um, for that, for that update. Also, I know last meeting you had, uh, a couple people say they would like to see, which I've known that you have been working on, uh, for more diversity in the police department, for those officers to represent the people that they serve. And, you know, and, and East Point, we always make sure that the people have the experience, the education and qualification. We don't try to look at, you know, color, but we also wanna make sure that we represent people who they're serving, so that we can understand people with different backgrounds and things like that. And so, um, hopefully in your decision-making, you make sure that, you know, you do that, what you have, so, um, I know that was a concern to a resident before. So we wanna make sure, you know, um, our police department is a melting pot.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you, good work, and, um, any questions for our city manager?
I have a question for Ms. Doom.
Okay.
Ms. Doom, I noticed the last few meetings that we have, um, asked Mr. Rohib to speak on behalf of police department and giving crime reports and such. Um, maybe that is something that we need to, um, add to a future agenda about actually adding him to the agenda, if that is something that all of council thinks is necessary, instead of just adding this on during your report every, every week.
Well, I think I spoke on that, um, I think I spoke on that, Ms. Doom, um,
You did.
A month ago, I did, and, uh, council didn't agree to it, so I already said that, and I think Director, Director Rohib, you remember that, I think, Mrs. De Monaco was against that. So, I mean, if council wants to do that, I don't see why people wouldn't wanna hear directly from the person that deals with the crime and the safety directly from his mouth than a third party. So I agree with putting that on there, like I said, I spoke on that a month ago. So, um, I, I'm glad you brought it back up, Ms. Lucito. So if all the council wants to do that, let's work on doing that. So, I don't wanna, uh, be repetitive, and if the mayor says something, somebody comes behind me and say the same thing. If we do, if we're all city council, let's do things the right way, and I bring it back up, because all, all of our opinions and ideas are on the same accord.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I just don't remember actually voting on it, I'll go back and check the minutes.
No, we didn't vote on it, but I bring it up, and no one, and Mr. Monaco was, uh, I think he was against it, I'm not sure, but I think so. But, um, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I, I know I bring it up. So, um, let's move right along to the finance director, Mr. Blum, how are you? You're back on. Director Blum?
Yes.
You're back on.
All right, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
All right, sometimes the unmute doesn't actually unmute, apparently. So, anyways, uh, yes, Madam Mayor and Council, I just had one item, um, we had a, uh, we have a new person that started yesterday, uh, a part-time cashier. Um, and there is a, um, an eligibility list that will be, uh, generated for two full-time clerk positions. We had a hundred, last I heard, a hundred and seventy-one people had applied, uh, so it might be a tad higher than that. And we're gonna have to whittle it down to two, so that'll be a fun time. Um, but yeah, so I'm, I'm slowly getting staff back where I need to be, and I'm very happy with that, but, uh, I have nothing else to discuss tonight.
I had a question, Mr. Blum, I meant to, uh, contact you, I apologize, I know we've been going back and forth, um, you know, I'm on the, uh, SMS SMS DA, uh, board, and they found, uh, you know, one of the council members found that, that East Point had, um, an additional six hundred thousand dollars, and I was wondering, can we move that money to our, our pension and probably invest in that money that to, because I know we're like, uh, a negative four million in the hole, and how can we invest that six hundred thousand dollars so that we can be more in the, you know, in the, you know, in the green instead of the red, is there any, can we do that, or?
Um, any monies that went to the sanitary district came out of the water sewer fund. So any refunds have to go back into the water sewer fund. It can be used to mitigate, uh, the water sewer rates, it can be used for infrastructure projects, uh, things like that, but, yeah, we can't just take it, move it over to general fund and pay for pension.
Well, can we do that with the, can we use that money for, and help lower the water rates, or, or help do?
Yes.
Can we, can we do that? Okay, well, I'll-
We're getting a refund, is what you're telling me.
Oh, yeah, a lot of money, so almost a million dollars, so what I'm saying is use that money and maybe we can lower the, uh, water rates and do some construction or give the residents a little bit of relief in another way. So, um, I'll let, uh, the director know over there to contact you about that money and see what we can do for the residents, okay?
Okay.
Um, anyone else? Any questions for our finance? Councilman?
Mute quickly enough there. Yeah, Mr. Blum, I had one question, last time at our last meeting, we talked about waiving, well, we did waive the late fees on the water bills. Um, one thing, it sounds like, you know, is this true, the Thursday, you were saying the Thursday before that meeting is when we found out, it sounds like the water department employees were already telling residents that late fees were going to be waived. It'd be nice if we waited until after we actually waived the fees, I think, is this true?
Um, well, that would be news to me, it was discussed that we were, that, um, it was gonna be brought forth to council, um, so they might have jumped the gun on telling people.
Yeah, so for future, be nice if-
Oh, absolutely.
Residents before we actually voted.
Yes. I concur with you.
Councilman De Monaco? I've kind of heard the same thing, but I heard that they told them that they were gonna be asking council to waive the fees, like, they, they told that administration was bringing it to council, not that it had already been like decided on.
Okay, I mean, yeah, a couple different people.
Yeah.
Yeah, but either way, you're correct, that it should not be told until it's been approved.
All right, thank you, yeah, that was my only question.
Anything else for the director of finance? Dana, moving right along to our city attorney, Mr. Albright, good evening.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, I had a very productive, uh, meeting with, uh, Ms. Hardcastle yesterday. Uh, it was our first, uh, real meeting since Ms. Hardcastle has taken over the job of building official, and we were able to discuss several topics, um, Ms. Hardcastle's going to be putting together, uh, a list of new dangerous building hearings, which will be scheduled. I anticipate those will probably be conducted sometime during the month of, uh, March. Uh, Ms. Hardcastle's also putting together a list of existing dangerous building hearings, uh, where the homeowners have not complied, and, uh, the time for completing the repairs or correcting, uh, whatever violations may exist has long since passed, and so uh, those will be brought before the city council for scheduling of show cause hearings. I don't know if I will have that address or that address list by, by the next council meeting, but I anticipate at the latest, I will have that available uh, for the first meeting in, uh, March. Um, I know I don't talk very often about the thirty-eighth District Court, but, um, the thirty-eighth District Court is starting out strong, uh, for twenty twenty-one. Uh, they are actively trying to move the docket along. Uh, there is a, a very large backlog of cases due to, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic, and so presently, uh, they are holding hearings, we are over there now on Monday mornings, Tuesday mornings, Wednesday mornings, and Friday mornings, uh, to handle pre-trials and bench trials, and to try to, uh, get, uh, uh, caught up and get, uh, the backlog down as much as possible, but, uh, things are running very smoothly over there. And, uh, Madam Mayor, um, council's in receipt of our monthly stats report, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, regarding that or any other questions that the, uh, council has.
Any questions, council, at this time? Dana, thank you so much, um, Mr. Albright, oh, I had, I do have a question. I believe, uh, Ms. Doom was sending you over, um, working on some paperwork to start the East Point uh, Promise Six Success, doing a, a, um, scholarship grant for our high schoolers. Like, um, well, in many, uh, many states, they do it, it's only four cities in the state of Michigan that do it. I don't know if she sent over that paperwork, or how, how did you wanna move along with that, Ms. Doom?
Uh, I do have the list of all of our vendors, um, as was requested. Uh, however, I would need, um, council's approval to go forward with the East Point Promise. And, um, as I stated, uh, I believe in my report, we would need a number of things, we would have to first have, um, council agree, then we would have to identify who could possibly be the, uh, benefactors. Um, besides our local businesses, we would need corporations and we would need large um, foundations so that they could, uh, commit year after year. And once, uh, we have identified some of that, we also would need legal documents that would not only, um, identify what the East Point Promise would be, but it would also have to include, you know, who is qualified for it, what the parameters are, what, are we talking, um, junior college? Are we talking a full four-year, is there a limit, does it pay for all, how many, and that depends on foundations. So our first start would be with council, that's where we start this. And then if council, um, votes to go forward, then we can go forward too.
Councilwoman Lucito?
Yes, um, I like the idea of the promise scholarship, but at the same time, I don't think that this is something that I would want administrate, administration spending time on, but if there was a council person that was interested in doing the legwork to see if it was even possible, and then bringing that proposal to the city manager and having them presented to council, I would definitely be in support of that.
I think I did most of the work by finding out that, did the research that, um, that it exists. Um, I, uh, researched the vendors, um, with the help of our finance director. And so I, I think, you know, reaching out to them wouldn't be, uh, hard, I mean, we never had this in the city of East Point. Um, and nobody in McCombs has it, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna push council to ask any council members to, you know, do all that research, I mean, I don't mind doing it, but at the same time, we do hire administration to do certain things to build up our city.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, I don't think asking like our vendors would be the sourcing fund we would wanna use, it would be more looking for a nonprofit that would support it, not asking for corporate donations, I, if there's corporate donations that want to donate towards an event, they should be presenting that, like, to us, we shouldn't be asking them, uh, I mean, that's just my opinion, as a city for money for a charity, I, I think that it would be more reasonable if there was a nonprofit that one of us had in mind that might be willing to support the scholarship.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with that, I'm gonna tell you why, because DCE, which is one of the biggest, a billion-dollar company, called me, uh, earlier last year, and I, I believe I told Ms. Doom, and offered to give us two thousand dollars, they go to every city and offer money, they did, they a- actually gave us money for our city, and they also asked me, do our school needs any money? And I reached out to the superintendent, so corporations do it all the time, they're one of, and they're also, uh, you know, they help us, they have billions of dollars. So why not ask them to, it's not like we're asking them as a city to help us, uh, do our roles or anything like that, we're asking them to help our, our children that live in our city, so, and they get a tax write-off on doing that, so it's not a city begging for money, it's the city asking them to- So it's not a city begging for money. It's the city asking them to support our children. So I'm gonna have to disagree with that.
No, and I understand the DTA came to you with offering those funds. And I think that is totally fine if a corporation wants to donate to the city. I'm not disagreeing with that. I just don't think we should be seeking the donation.
Mayor, do the city governments run those in the other parts of the state?
Well, I gave that information to Ms. Doon, so I think she have to do the research. Like I said, I, I found it. I was looking it up, you know, when I was researching grants for myself. And I saw that a lot of cities do that for the high schoolers. And so anytime I want to better educate myself, I want my residents and my kids to as well. So I call the high schoolers my kids. But, so excuse me if I do that. But so, so I thought that we should, as a city, you know, that's our only high school. And I wanted to support them. I don't know if we have a lot of, you know, grants and scholarships for them. And I wanted to create one, like Detroit did, Pontiac did, and two other communities in Michigan did as well. So I think it would be, I think it would be a good idea to do that. So I know we agreed upon doing that. We give our vendors millions and millions of dollars, such as AEW. They've been with East Point for over 30 years. I don't see them, we're, we're not asking them. We're letting them know what we're doing. And if they want to, you know, if they want to join, we're not gonna stop contracting with them or doing business with them. We're asking them if they want to help our children. So that money doesn't go to East Point. It goes to our children and they get the check to go to get higher education. So, and then I would think to build a commission so that East, I mean, not even me or the council picks these kids. We would create a commission, probably one school board person on the school board to be on this commission or resident, one of the people that's giving the money on the grant and things like that. So it will, you know, council, because I don't want to have any conflict of interest with me or the council. So that's why we're picking certain people to build a commission on this scholarship. Again, and then those kids have to have a certain grade point average. They have to do volunteer work in the city of East Point. And so we're just getting ready, getting them ready for success. And I think as elected officials, we should do that. So especially we have the power to do it, you know. So I just, you know, leave it on the floor for council. What are you guys' ideas on that?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
I believe that is, it's a very good idea to support our children and their education and their goals in life. Without actually having it established right now, there is nothing that we have to offer them. But if something is established, then yes, it would be up to the individual whether they wanted to donate or not. It wouldn't be us trying to persuade them to donate. It would just be us informing them that it's out there and that it's available.
I agree.
I agree.
Council. Now, if you don't want to move along with it, that's fine, but you put it out there to do something for the, our children? If not, let's move right along to new business. Under new business is item A, adoption of resolution number 21-1917, Black History Month for February 2021. Which is my favorite month of the year, not just because it's Black History Month, because my birthday is in February. So that is why.
And Mayor, if I could speak?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, as I was reading this, that Sarah actually brought to us. I, I just recall moving here in 2014 of January. And this has been a long time coming. When I moved here with my children and they were in Pleasant View in Kelly, at that time, East Point did not observe Martin Luther King Birthday, which was a federal holiday in 2000. So when I went to ask the school about that day off, you know, like they're getting Martin Luther King Day off. They say, no, we don't observe that. And so when I let them know that my children would not be in school that day, they told me that my children would have an absent, unescused absence for Martin Luther King Day. And, and that's when I knew that they would never have a perfect attendance in the city of East Point. After years of more people moving out here, more African-Americans moving out here and a lot more absentee and Martin Luther King Birthday, the school adapted a professional development training day so that the children were able to stay home because they had so much absentee on Martin Luther King's Day. But the teachers still had to go and administrations still had to go. I don't even know what year they finally adopted Martin Luther King becoming a city holiday for the city of East Point. Because I would always take mine out that day. So this is a good thing and it's been a long time coming. And the city is changing. So being able to recognize each and every resident is a beautiful thing. And recognizing the, the, the holiday. And the month of February is Black History Month. That is awesome.
Absolutely. This was requested by Councilwoman Lucido. I'll let her speak on this if you would like to.
Madam Mayor, first I would like to thank Mrs. Diebold for composing this resolution. I think she did a fantastic job. On the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission is, you know, the one who composed it. But she, she was the main author of it. I would be honored to read it unless Madam Mayor, if you would like to read it.
I'll let you read it since you put it on here. The only thing I, I would, I didn't like, well, I liked it, but I didn't like it, was when you put people names in here for the Black Lives Matter March in Macomb County, because they weren't the only people that created pro, you know, did, were advocates of racial justice. We had an actual person that did an event before this event that was in East Point. And she's an East Point resident and it went, it was phenomenal before this one. So sometimes I want to be careful in giving accolades by name because then we leave people out. So all the people that did a protest for racial injustice in Macomb County, I want to say we appreciate you and we thank you. Because I was at the one in Macomb County and I was the one in here and they were phenomenal. So I never want to leave anybody out because putting these things together are a lot of hard work. And so we want, don't want to put one person above people because this is the people we like or, you know, they're in our clique, they're in our groups. We never want to do that because this is about everybody thing. So again, to everybody who, who fought for racial injustice in Macomb County, Wayne County, throughout the state of Michigan and around, we want to say thank you. And you can go ahead and read. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Whereas the city of East Point recognizes the significance of Black History Month in our community, our state and our nation. And whereas the city of East Point recognizes the month of February as Black History Month, which dates back to 1925, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period of time in February to recognize the heritage and achievement of Black Americans. And whereas the city of East Point appreciates the importance of elected and appointed individuals of African-American descent representing our community. And whereas the city of East Point acknowledges the history of Black Americans and continually being written. And whereas the city of East Point recognizes the work needed to be done in order to realize racial equality in our community. And whereas the city of East Point supports advocates of racial justice, including the hard work of Angel Santana, Mary Bagdu, and Arena Bellevue on June 5th of 2020, June 6th of 2020, for the Black Lives Matter March in Macomb County. And whereas the city of East Point encourages its employees, residents and business owners to practice active anti-racist behaviors. And whereas the city of East Point denounces all discrimination in any form of an affront or fundamental rights of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the city of East Point commends racist, condemns racism in all forms in our neighborhoods, in our policymaking and in our policing. And whereas the city of East Point recognizes the work already done by employees, residents and business owners to achieve racial equality in our community. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of the city council declare the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of East Point and urge all residents to recognize the contributions and experiences of people of African-American descent within our community. And with that said, Madam Mayor, I will motion to adopt resolution number 21-1917 for Black History Month for the February 2020.
Move and support it. Please call the row. Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Moving right along to item B, the adoption of resolution number 21-1918, blanket permit for general road maintenance, Macomb County Department of Roads. Ms. Doon, can you give us a brief summary of this before we vote?
I can. This is a standard resolution that we have every approximately six years. And it's a blanket permit for general road maintenance with the Macomb County Department of Roads. What it allows is the city to make emergency repairs to their facilities within the county's right-of-way as well as install water service and sanitary leads and repair sidewalks. So again, this permit will be issued for a period of another six years. So we last adopted this in 2014. And so we need to adopt this once again so that we have the ability to work within road right-of-ways.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our city manager? Moving right along. Can I get a motion?
For mayor, I'll motion we adopt resolution number 21-1918, blanket permit for general road maintenance, Macomb County Department of Roads for the period February 1, 2020 through February 1, 2026, and authorize the city manager to execute the application and permit to construct, operate, use and or maintain the right-of-way or to close a county road on behalf of the city.
Support. Move and support it. Please call the row.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution number 21-1917. This has to do with our city assessor, Mr. Edwards. Is he on the line? Do he want to speak on this if he's on the line? If not, we do a summary by Ms. Doon.
He's on the line.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Edwards. How are you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council. Normally this item would appear this time of year on the agenda. You know, to approve the updated poverty guidelines for the city that we use for the hardship exemption. The state legislature and the governor signed into law in late December changes that affected the the hardship exemption and the framework going forward of, you know, how, how it's gonna be done, basically. And so the city now has to update the city hardship policy and guidelines in order to align those with the state law that was just, you know, updated in December. I'm looking at the council packet and it looks like a couple of papers, a couple of items did not make it. So you'll have to bear with me because I wanted to go over the changes kind of on a line-by-line basis and, and stop me if I'm going too fast or if you have questions about it, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I guess we could go over them in kind of a two-pronged approach. The first one is going to be the changes that were mandatory and that we've implemented in this year, 2021's hardship policy. And the other, once we're done talking about those or once I'm done talking about those, we'll go into the optional items that the state passed and put into law. So again, bear with me. If you have any questions, please let me know and feel free to stop me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right now, Mr. Edwards. I'm gonna tell you why. I'm gonna tell you why. I feel like this is gonna be really long, but because we missed paperwork, can you give us, because you're not on this right now, correct? Can you resend this with the things that have changed in red?
I can. That is possible, but the state of Michigan and the law that they passed put a deadline if the city council were to choose one of the optional resolutions to incorporate that into either a new resolution or however they wanted to do. The state has given a deadline of February 15th, 2021, and that is before the next scheduled council meeting.
Okay, well, I'll let you proceed, but if you can.
I'll try to keep it as short and as sweet as possible, I promise. Okay, so just a couple procedural things that they did. They, they removed the word supervisor from the statute, making it clear that only the board of review can grant or deny a poverty exemption. That is always been the case. It's always been implied that the board of review only is the, is the governing body that can do that. And what I think they wanted to do was kind of clean up the language in the statute because in some communities, more of like a rural community, farming community, it's a lot of the times the township supervisor is also the assessor. So they, they struck that out of the law. They also wanted to clarify, which I can say that we've done this in the past, but they provide clarification that the federal income levels that are adopted every year are from the previous year. So we're in 2021. We have to use the 2020 Department of Health and Human Services guidelines that they provide, and they just clarified that in the law. One thing that I did like is they require the local unit to make the policy guidelines and application available on their website. We currently do not have that. So that's something that once council passes the resolution, whenever it is, will finalize the application and guidelines and make sure that gets onto the city's website so people can access it through the website and, and, and get it instead of, you know, coming in to request one or through the mail. A kind of a medium, a medium change, not, not small but not huge, is, is they removed the words substantial and compelling reasons for granting a poverty exemption. Now, the language in the law that is written is, the board used to be able to deviate from the policy and guidelines if there was substantial and compelling reasons. And the board felt that if it was necessary, then they could grant a poverty exemption if there was an exception to the rule. Now the law has specifically struck that out. And I can tell you that there are at least one applicant that I know of on an annual basis that the board has deviated from the guidelines and granted them a poverty. So this would affect at least one person that I'm aware of and possibly others. And they also, this is kind of a major change. Now, if you remember, two years ago, we, it's required that the city has an asset test. As part of, as part of the policy is there's an asset test. And we changed it from a flat fee, which was $10,000. You couldn't have assets, you know, savings account, investments, stocks, bonds, whatever it is, over $10,000. We changed that two years ago, which I thought was a great change, to make it 10 times the tax levy. That's still in place. The calculation, the change to the law that affects the way that we do the poverty's, it's the calculation now. So we used to have a formula that we used, you know, based on how much income the person has annually and taking into consideration the amount of the homestead tax credit that they could receive from the state of Michigan and kind of using that as the firsthand relief from the state before the, the city's, you know, taxes or the city's portion is kicked in for the exemption. The state has now made it where you can't really use your own reduction unless it's now, you have to have it approved by the state. So the state came out and used a very plain reduction system and it's based on percentage. So either somebody could get 100% reduction where they pay absolutely no taxes for the year, a 50% reduction where their taxable levy or burden would be reduced by 50% or 25%. Now, I don't really know how or what the logic was behind coming up, you know, these numbers because they, they left out 75%. So we have 25, 50 or 100. That is the methodology that I propose that we use for 2021. Just because that, there's two caveats. One, if you were to use an alternate system, you have to have it approved by the state tax commission. And you have to submit it in writing. It has to go before the state tax commission at their meeting and then, and then they get back to the local community. And two is that, you know, we're not too far away from the March Board. I've already had people. I've already had people call and request applications, so we want to get those out to people so they have time to get those back to us. So I think just for 2021, we can just use what the state's recommendation of the 100%, 50%, or 25% reduction. And then if it's determined that there's a better system, that, you know, other assessors in the McComb County or statewide adopt a more different method, we can explore those issues next year. Those are the mandatory changes. And like I said, I have updated the resolution to reflect those changes, to align with the law. The optional changes. Now, there's three optional changes. And again, if you have questions, stop me or, you know, feel free to ask at any point in time. So the local units can adopt a resolution that allows an exemption that was granted in 2019 or 2020 to carry forward to 2021, 2022, and 23 for persons who receive a fixed income solely from public assistance that is not subject to a significant annual increase. So this includes social securities, social security disability, or retirement benefits. That is an option. The local units can also adopt a resolution for any new exemptions in 2021, 2022, or 23, so this year and the future two years, to carry forward for up to three years. So if somebody was granted an exemption in 2021, council could pass a resolution that says this exemption will stay in place for up to three years. We'll get into, I guess, the reason why I'm not proposing those changes being made at this time shortly. I want to go to the third optional. The third optional is that the local units can carry a poverty exemption forward that was granted in 19 or 20 for the 2021 tax year without the person having to protest to the March Board or to any board of review. So I know that's a lot to handle at one time as the optional, so I'll go over just briefly again. So if somebody was granted an exemption in 2019 or 2020, council can adopt a resolution where they can go right to 2021, and they get that exemption automatically, the same that was given them prior. Council could also adopt a resolution granted in 1920, carry forward for three years, or I'm sorry, up to 21, 22, and 23. And if there's an exemption granted in 21, 22, or 23, it could be three years, whatever year it was granted. So very confusing. The reason why I did not propose any of these changes is because the state also makes it a requirement that an audit system be put in place from the local unit's responsibility to audit these individuals and make sure that they're still in compliance with, you know, making sure that they still qualify, making sure that there's still, nothing's changed. The state has provided these publications that say in future publications, they will let you know what the guidelines or what the audit entails, but they haven't given us that information at this time. You know, the reason why I feel like that I didn't add this to this current resolution, I'm just thinking into the future of, okay, they create an audit program, and what do they want you to do? They want to make sure that the people still qualify for the hardship exemption. Okay, well, what are they gonna have to do? They're gonna have to make sure that, you know, their tax returns, you know, they're gonna have to show their proof of income. They're gonna have to show their bank and financial statements of what they, you know, make sure that they pass the asset test and things like that. That's stuff that is already required with our current policy that applicants have to do anyways. So, you know, I'm very hesitant, you know, with this audit, this audit implication, or the state wanting an audit procedure to be in place, when I feel like it's just gonna be the same thing as somebody would apply to the board of review. And I also think that, you know, ultimately, the board of review has the decision. So, you know, somebody, obviously, doing the audit is not gonna be from the board of review. It's gonna be somebody from either assessing or management. I don't know. But I assume it's gonna be somebody from the city doing this. And I feel more comfortable that leaving that decision for somebody qualifying for a hardship and getting the reduction ultimately should lay on the board of review's decision and not really, you know, an audit procedure. So I kind of understand where they're coming from, but until they provide a little bit more clarity of what should be required with the audit and who's gonna be doing it, I don't think that the council should adopt that resolution at this time. Now, that is something that we could address next year or going forward. I do think that's an option, but they kind of compressed us in a very, very short timeline. And as some of you, all of you know that this is the busiest time for assessors. We're working very diligently, and I have to thank my staff because we're doing a great job getting the assessments ready for 2021 and getting that out, and this is just kind of something that is, you know, we have to address right now, is just part of the, you know, part of the job, but they give us a very compact timeline. So I wish the legislation would have done this earlier or later in 2020 to give us a little bit more time to prepare, but unfortunately, they didn't. So again, my recommendation is just to adopt the resolution as proposed. Like I said, I did make the changes that are required by law so that we are, you know, we're meeting the requirements, you know, legally. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, council. Any questions for our assessor?
No, just thank you very much for coming out and explaining everything.
Yeah, no problem. It was, you know, it was some pretty big changes. Normally, it's not big changes every year, but this year, they did have some pretty substantial changes, and I felt like it was important for me to show up tonight and explain it and answer your questions because, you know, with the amount of changes like this, it can be confusing, and I had to read it at least five times in order to get it down so that I could explain it to you guys tonight.
I would appreciate if you would still just email us over all of those proposed changes that they did send, especially those resolutions, because those do seem kind of interesting, that depending on how they work out, they might actually end up making it a little bit easier for the residents and for you.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. They were just publications from the state tax commission, so I can email you that documentation. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Doon?
I'd like to chime in. We have spoken about this, and the state has given assessors very little time to propose, you know, all of these options, and some of them are just not really good options at this point. They haven't thought through the entire process, how we can accomplish that. And so when Mr. Edwards and I spoke about this, as you know, as the council knows, I served as a tax assessor for 14 years, and I have a daughter who is a tax assessor, so I'm pretty up on these laws, too. What I do want to bring to everyone's attention, especially those folks who are listening at home, what a poverty is or a hardship is, is simply the inability to pay your taxes. You just don't have the financial wherewithal to pay your annual taxes on your home. And so what concerns me is that 2020 was a really rough year for a lot of people. They struggled. They were out of work. They were on unemployment, and they just didn't have much income. I just want to get out the word, along with our assessor, that you may qualify for relief from taxation for the 2020 year if you've had some real financial difficulties in the year. You do have to be a homeowner, can't be a renter, but if you own your home and 2020 was a disastrous year for you financially, by all means, contact the assessor's office. You may qualify this one year. Now, the concern that Mr. Edwards and I had about potentially giving someone a blanket three-year hardship, that would work really well when people have their fixed incomes, you know they're on social security, or you know they're on some type of a disability. But what often happens is people have something very catastrophic happen in their lives, and they need help for one year. They might need help for two years. But once they get themselves back financially stable, and, you know, their income level comes back up, then they won't need that help, and they wouldn't qualify. So that's one of the concerns that I've always had as a former tax assessor and with our assessor, is that there are people out there who really may be able to benefit from coming forward this year and at least asking, what are the requirements? You know, what should my income be? Do I have any special circumstances that make it impossible for me to pay my taxes? As you know, we don't want people to lose their homes. We want them to keep them. We've had too many tax foreclosures, and we don't want to see that, especially if there's help out there. So that's just something that I want to share with folks. Please call the assessor's office if you think that you're not going to be able to pay your taxes because you've had such a difficult financial year, and they'll let you know whether or not you're eligible. And that's all I have to share.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, and the assessor's office as well for all your hard work. Anything else from council? Any other questions? Councilwoman?
I'll make a motion.
Just one last thing before, I just wanted to, for anybody watching, I don't mean to cut you off. I apologize, Madam Mayor and council. The fact that, you know, if people did have a rough 2020, just as kind of to piggyback on what Ms. Doon was speaking of, I've not, you know, I can have my own opinion, but for them to strike out the language saying that substantial and compelling reasons, for them to remove that from the law, it makes the poverty or the hardship program very cut and dry, very black and white, that, you know, whatever the guidelines are from DHHS, that's it. You know, even if you have just this horrible story, you know, and something crazy happened to you, 2020 was a crazy year for a lot of people, and if, you know, if you don't meet these guidelines, there's nothing we can do for you at the local level. I mean, there's obviously further appeal rights that people have if they do deny, you know, if they get denied, but the board of review kind of really has their hands tied now because they are not allowed to use discretion. You know, and before, it was a three-person board, so I mean, you know, people, we had three votes. And if you had majority votes because you had a substantial compelling reason, then you were granted a hardship. They've gotten rid of that. So I'm not, and I try to not leave my personal bias out of things, but I'm not a big fan of that change just for the reason that a lot of people had a rough 2020. So I just want people to, you know, you can always apply. We always encourage people to apply. We never tell people not to apply, but if you don't get a favorable decision at the board, it's not because, you know, they didn't like you or whatever. It's really because they have limited authority in granting these hardships going forward, and that's all I wanted to just clarify.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Lucino?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen nineteen, which establishes a new hardship exemption policy and guidelines for the city consistent with state law and the recommendation of the city assessor for the use by the East Point Assessment Board of Review.
Support. Move to support it. Please call the row. Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Thank you, Otis. We did get those documents in email just now, and yes.
Okay, moving right along to item D, approval to accept offer to purchase address one six seven four one eight mile property. We have our economic manager, Ms. Holman. Are you still there, Ms. Holman?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to briefly, I'm asking everybody to briefly tonight, speak on this, so we can move right along. Did you want to briefly speak on this tonight?
So, yes, this property has been renovated and listed for sale, and we received an offer of, actually, I was very pleased, $123,000. And the buyer is applying, has pre-approved for an FHA mortgage, which means he is a first-time homeowner, homebuyer, both of which are goals of the project. So I am asking council to approve the offer to purchase and allow the city manager to execute all the documents needed to close this sale.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Any questions by council?
I just have one comment really quick. So, I mean, even though, like, I didn't approve to use, I think it's CMS, to do the renovations, I kind of wanted to do them like in-house ourselves. I am happy that we sold the home, so I am excited that we have this on the agenda tonight.
Anything else from anybody? All right.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Curly?
Did you want a motion?
Yes, sir. That's what you was about to do.
Oh, okay. I would move that we accept the offer to purchase to purchase sixteen seven forty-one eight mile road in an amount of $120,000 and to authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the sale of the property, including but not limited to the offer to purchase seller closing documents and the quitclaim deed.
Can I get support?
I'll support that.
Thank you. Motion and support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Curly?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Councilmember DeMonaco, yes?
The, I had asked for the breakdown of costs between us and CMS. I didn't see that. Do we have that? I mean, it'd be good to know when we're selling this, what the actual breakdown between us and the contractor is.
So at this time, we have $22,000 invested in the property. CMS has somewhere between $65,000 and $72,000 that will all be laid out. Of course, the city has asked for the air conditioning to be put in at our cost and a couple extra things, so that will be broken down at the time the settlement statement is prepared by the title company.
How do we not, I mean, how do we not have this set in stone before we're approving this right now?
Well, actually, not all of the costs have been finalized yet, so we, you know, we have an idea of where everything is. It is, the price coming in is above all the costs that were expended. But again, between the closing costs and everything else that has to be calculated, all that is going to the title company.
Well, and so when we're saying the AC, then we're covering that, that's not counted in the 22,000 then that we're talking about?
No, that was added afterwards because the city wanted to make sure that all these houses, in addition to the, everything that we had done, that we had added the air conditioning. So that was decided after the budget was prepared.
Okay, so we don't really know how much we're making here then on this sale at this moment?
Well, we have 22,000. They have, CMS is somewhere between 65,000 and 72,000, and the price is, the offer to purchase is at 123,000. Again, we have to be cognizant of the fact that cities actually cannot make profit. We, the Michigan Legislature did actually pass the law that is going to limit the amount, that is going to regulate what cities can actually pay for properties and what cities can make on properties. And it is going to be very complex.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lucino, I think she had a question.
No, I was just gonna clarify, too. I'm assuming that in the costs that they gave us of their 72,000, approximately was what their costs were, that that did not include the real estate fees?
Correct.
So the real estate fees and the closing fees and the quitclaim deed would all be subtracted from that 123,000 before we split the profit?
Yes.
And it doesn't include the 65 to 72, doesn't include, like, wages? That's just actual costs, right?
No, that would include everything.
So then, so they're getting a certain wage, and then we're also splitting the profit with them after that?
So they are getting their cost for materials and labor and contractors that they hired from the outside, you know? And then, yes, so that is all included. And then, yes, so that is all included.
Okay, that is, that's not what I was expecting.
I just wish you would have came when I asked anybody had any questions, we used to ask these questions, Mr. Councilmember DeMonaco, before we was into the middle of our vote.
Uh, well, no, I tried and I mean, Mayor, I asked this a couple of days ago before.
Yeah, I saw that email, but I'm staying in the middle of a of a vote. You got questions for Ms. Holman, but which is fine, but. We already had a vote set on the floor. So what are you, what do you need from Ms. Holman? You want an outline of.
Yeah.
So, you know, costs associated totally, because that, because how much did we pay for originally, Ms. Holman? Then Mr. DeMonaco wants to just get a line item of everything we paid for and get how much we're getting back. Is that correct, Councilman?
Yeah, because I guess if this, I guess my main reason for asking this is that 65 to 72, we could have just. Paid someone to do it for that price if that was all the wages and everything of the subcontractors and then kept 100% of the profits, I guess. That's what I brought up back when we voted on the original agreement, but. I mean, I I guess.
We don't make a profit though. We just get our money back and we get a person that's living in a home in our city. I think that's the profit right there. I'm not.
No, I do understand all that and the lawsuit too, but.
Yeah, okay. I guess I'm not understanding.
I'm all set for now, I guess. I mean, I want to, I do want to see these numbers, but. Yeah, I'm gonna vote no for now, since I don't know the numbers.
Mr. DeMonaco? Madam Mayor, may I for a minute? So moving forward, if we could just maybe just have a better idea of the numbers with the other homes that are going to be coming forward to us. Beforehand would probably be a good idea, but. Um, I mean, I I understand Mr. DeMonaco's concerns. I mean, that's why I originally didn't vote to use this company, but I mean, this is exactly what I kind of expected. So I'm not really surprised by the fact that we're paying for these labor costs also out of there before splitting it.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, Ms. Holman. Now, the company that we use, wasn't it the company that we voted that they they're gonna work with us and whatever. We make, we split it in half and they do the fixtures? Is this the same company?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They have been using, I mean, these homes are truly the best on the block. Granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. You know, the marble floor, the very nice flooring, hardwood floors, actually, four of the houses had incredible hardwood floors. Hidden under four layers of vinyl and carpet and things like that. So it truly, these truly are, you know, undermount sinks. New vanities in the bathrooms, new fixtures, new tile. So we are, they are doing, you know, making these houses the best on the block. We're very pleased with this offer that is truly one of the highest on Eight Mile. Personally, I'm a little concerned. I hope that it appraises for that much. Um, so that the mortgage is approved. But, and again, it's FHA, it's a first time homebuyer into the city of East Point. Which is again, the goal, the goal of the council. One of the things moving forward is. We do need to move more quickly as it, you know, pertains to approving these offers to purchase. You know, standardly, it's about a 48 hour timeframe to turn around the approval. And and to let a buyer know that they've been approved and can move forward with the inspection, which has already occurred, and then the appraisal. So that is something, you know, I'm hoping council will be amenable to, you know. Special meetings so that we can turn some of these. We have a property, two other properties coming in the next two weeks. Or two to three weeks and those. Again, this one being on Eight Mile, it had some disadvantages with the location, even though, you know, internally. It is quite a property. So I'm expecting these other two to move much more quickly. So if if needed, I hope council is amenable to holding a special meeting to approve the purchase agreements.
Thank you. Any more? Conversation on this? Council?
No, Madam Mayor, I, yeah, let's get on with the vote, but I do have a couple of questions to ask him, but not until after the vote.
Well, I would like to comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay, please.
Okay, I would, I would. Hope that we don't discourage anyone from buying a house in the city of East Point. And I know that we've been talking about the new state law. Where we can only get back what we put into a property and we really can't make a profit off of it. And as long as we're getting back what we put in. Then that's just suffice, because I would hate to discourage someone. From buying a house in East Point, which is a wonderful place to live. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Curly, I want you to go ahead and say what you have to say, because I want to move right along. So Ms. Holman can go to sleep.
Well, we haven't voted on this yet, have we? Kim, you brought it up about the Supreme Court. Is that Supreme Court have made a decision about the where the funds go to, that we talked about when. The county, we buy, we buy a house from the county for $2,000 and we put. 50,000, $48,000 into it, so that's $50,000. And we end up splitting the money or we ends up that the homeowner gets the money. Has that been all washed up and clarified yet?
Um, not all of it yet, sir. So the Supreme Court opinion, Raffaelli, one of the things they're waiting for is an opinion from the Supreme Court as to whether that would apply retroactively. However, the Michigan Legislature and on December, I think it was 17th. Did approve an entire new process as it relates to. People that can, former owners that can file claims. And in the case that they file a claim against any surplus proceeds. It changes the amount the city would have to pay versus if there were no claims filed. There's still a lot of confusion. Right now, it appears that. Properties prior, properties the city purchased prior to 2018 are going to be protected. But anything purchased in 1920 or then this movie, this this year moving forward. There is a chance that we would be, we would be liable for the proceeds, so. Mr. Blum and I have been talking about it and of course are keeping very careful track of what. What what we're spending on each property for that reason.
Okay, all right. As long as we keep informed, because. It sounds to me like what if the Supreme Court and the legislative goes it, there is no, there will be no such thing as a profit.
That is true. And so the the key is. To look to partnerships and relationships that will bring what we need into the city. For instance, we have been talking with the Downtown Development Authority as per the master plan and the. The CIP that. The downtown, the DDA have first option to purchase any properties that are in the DDA. We have two Grashit properties. We have met with the DDA, talking about them purchasing that. Because the city, of course, cannot profit, but we could in turn sell that property to the DDA and the DDA could. Either fix it and hold it and lease it. Or could sell it and use that the the funds for some projects in the DDA. So there there are ways that we can still be protected. And and keep the money in the city, which is our goal.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I'm gonna put it back on the floor. Anyone else have any questions from Ms. Holman? Saying none, we have motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Okay, moving right along. We have approval to amend the snow plowing and salt contracts for additional quotes. I see that we have our DPW director right now, Mr. Darren. Is he, does he want to speak on this or Ms. Doom want to speak on this?
I can speak on it, Madam Mayor. You know, we've had a rather mild winter. The snows just started to come and we realized there were some areas that hadn't been plowed. So we took another look at the contract that was. Created by our former assistant city manager and realized that there are areas that were not included in the contract that should have been. So we have recognized where those areas are that were, should have been in the original. Request for proposal on on snow plowing, identified them and then gotten pricing for that. So we will need to add this to it so that we can have all of our areas plowed.
I have a question on this. Since we added additional. Areas, should this have went out to bid?
Ms. Holman, I'll have you speak on that, please.
So the additional areas that we have found were actually. Very unusual. The curved walkway between City Hall and the other side of Grashit. There's a corner triangle between, you know, on different streets. There's different, some of the Grashit median intersections, the Kelly Road intersections, two city-owned parking lots that were missed. So what we had done is reached out to the two vendors that actually bid on our snow removal. And asked them for pricing, which is what I've put together for you. The salt and full service, what the price would be for each of them, for the different parcels, we created maps. And actually, I found today that there's an additional area, Roxanna Park has a new gazebo and sidewalk. That was put in, installed after the bid went out, so that's not being cleared. So DPW is actually getting me the measurements of the sidewalk tomorrow, so we can check into that. But what we're trying to do is make sure everything is covered. We did get. You know, again, like, like Ms. Doom said, some citizen complaints. So good news, we'll be really good to go on the next RFP, because we have now every inch of city sidewalk. And and it will be really good, should, when we're ready to do grass cutting. But these again were things that were missed that are that are important walkways. Kelly Road, you know, near the middle school. Some of those things that that we really need to make sure that we take care of.
Now, the DPW couldn't do this? DPW, our Department of Public Works couldn't do this?
So actually, some of these were set up so that the curved sidewalk near City Hall between Aurora and. I can't remember the name of the street. Right where our parcels are. Since we had expert landscaping already doing the the city property, the City Hall property. To add that into their contract, some of the others where we already had Ed's Two Men and a Mower doing the the different things, we're trying to add that in. So we, I did again, reach out, ask for different quotes and then have presented what what those prices were. So we were asking that it be awarded as, you know, as listed in the memo.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying we couldn't have our DPW do it. And why not?
I'm actually gonna defer to Mr. Palucci.
Mr. Palucci.
Okay, well. Thank you there. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Well, we we have been doing a few of them, but we only have four part timers. So the rest of our 11 people are full timers. And when it snows, we're out taking care of all our, what we call priority one and priority two roads. The major roads and and the bus and and emergency routes. So we really only have four people that can do, that would go out and do this, and are part timers. And and they have their daily work assignments, which keeps them very busy as well.
Okay, so they can't fit this in, because I'm saying, the reason I'm saying that, I'm not trying to discredit you or anything like that with Ms. Holman. Is something that has been there for, it sound like for a while that you guys didn't know was there. So we haven't been maintaining these areas or, so there are hours now, we have to, I guess that's the question. Does we own it now? Because. Yes, ma'am.
In the past, we've always had these done. I think these were just areas that maybe were kind of forgotten about from our assistant city manager when he originally went out to bed, from the way I understand it. I don't, I don't think that these are new areas, like these, these are areas that just were forgotten when Mr. Fairbrother had originally put this out to bed.
Who was taking care of it before then, if it was already taken care of?
Um, I believe Mr., well, when Mr. Ultimacy's were always, you know, whatever contractor we used in the previous, these areas were put in those contracts. They were forgotten in this, in the contract this year. This is a new, this just happened this year. This isn't like a normal. With the exception of Roxanna Park, because it's a new pavilion that we're gonna be adding.
Yeah, I just thought it was weird. How do we forget where our location is at and what what areas we supposed to service all of a sudden?
No, I mean, I agree. It's weird.
Madam Mayor, yes, Councilmember Lucido is right. These were things that were missed in the RFP that was put out by the former city manager. And so we have been, you know, discovering these and, you know, literally they're small little pieces here and there. And again, as Mr. Palucci says, you know, they're short-staffed and some of these are actually fit. I, you know, correctly, perfectly into what the other, what the contractors are doing already.
The reason I'm gonna vote for this is because, one, I trust you guys, so this is your job, but. But I really would like to have everything in a bid and not having it in pieces. And and then I can't do, you know, it's it's snowing now, so we need these services done now, so. Council, you have anything else to say concerning this? And thank you, Ms. Holman and Mr. Palucci as well for being here tonight. Saying no further questions, let's move forward with the motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the amendment of each contract to include the additional locations and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents to amend the contract.
Support.
Moving to support it, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along. We're almost there. Item F, approval of budget amendment BA 21-03. We have our finance director. Did you want to give us a brief summary on this?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. The, these are just the mid-year updates for things that have happened throughout the year. The biggest things are the grants revenues that have come in. We received 971,000 in CARES money, the majority related to expenses from the prior fiscal year. And then we received our $204,000 grant for election activities. We did have to reduce the property tax revenues because of some tax tribunals that came through. And we decreased investment income because the 2% that we had been getting is down to about 0.1% today. So we're not getting as much investment as we used to. On the expense side. There's been an increase, of course, the the 204,000 for the election grant. Offset by a decrease in ranked choice voting expenses that we did not incur. There was some hazard pay that's throughout various departments. We have to increase our legal fees. We've been keeping Erie O'Brien busy. They're actually have exceeded the full year budget already and it's only January. So all these dangerous building hearings, I guess. But we were able to offset that with a decrease in labor attorney fees. So it's kind of a little bit of ups and downs. There's some, the body cameras that were approved by council. There's an increase there in a court police door project that was not finished in the prior fiscal year, so there's a carryover on that. And then a $53,500 increase for the ladder truck approved at the last council meeting. Throughout some of the other departments, there's some changes, similar type things. I'm not really gonna run through those right now, but if council has any questions, go ahead.
Any questions, council? Saying none. Thank you, Director.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll motion that be resolved that the East Point City Council approve budget amendment BA 21-03 as presented.
Support.
Move this support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Item G, The Bid Award for the Ed industrial services of Warren 2021 through 2023 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation program. We have our City Manager. Did you want to do a briefing on this before we move along with voting?
All right. All right. What this does is there's some documents that are included. And this company, I can't quite pronounce it, is the lowest bidder. It involves cleaning enclosed circuit television investigation of the mainline sanitary and sewer cleaning system throughout the city of East Point. And as you remember earlier, we had a resident asking about when we were going to be looking at the sewers. And this will begin that process. Also included within the attachments are the proposal, the CEI, a pro award recommendation letter from AEW along with the bid tabulation and sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation district map. So the financial impact of this is a total project cost over two and a half year period will be $1,458,325. And my recommendation is that when you award the company to Doach Industry Services of Warren for sanitary cleaning and CCTV.
Council.
Mayor, we've got AEW on the call too.
Sorry, thank you, sir. AEW, good evening. Can you give us a brief summary, please?
Yeah, no problem. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Kern with Anderson X. Stein and Westrick. Yeah, basically just to add to Ms. Doom, basically we're looking at cleaning and televising the entire city's sanitary sewer system. It's roughly 98 miles of sewer over two and a half year period. We would be doing Districts One and Two that's shown on the district map this year. Nikolai Street, west of Grashit, as the resident had mentioned earlier, tonight would be within District One and that would be done in the first part of this year. Districts Three and Four would be completed next year and then District Five in the early part of 2023. The estimated costs of the project was roughly $1.8 million, so the low bit of $1.2.62 million as well, under the estimated budget for the project. Doach Industrial Services is very capable of doing the work. They've done work in the city of East Point previously. I think 2013 was the last time they did sewer cleaning in the city and they've done work for the adjacent communities as well. They're certified to do pipeline assessment through the National Association of Sewer Service Companies. So we do recommend awarding the project to them. It's been some time since the city has done a comprehensive sewer study. And there's been some, some areas that have been done in the city in the past few years. If you may recall, the city got a saw grant to do some storm sewer and lateral work, but that did not involve the mainline sewers. There's some areas in the city that's been several years since the big line sewers have been investigated. And this program will allow the city to get a better understanding of the structural condition of the sewer system, be able to prioritize future improvements.
Okay. I have a question. I'm glad you're on here. So who do we have cleaning our sanitary sewers now? No one, no one?
Yeah, currently, there's no one. I don't know if the DPW is doing any specific locations or has been in the past, but as far as I know, there's, right now, there's nothing going on with sewer cleaning and televising.
I thought when I, I went to go visit you when, two years ago, you guys had cameras in the pipes, in the ground. So that doesn't, that wouldn't help with what we're about to pay. I thought you guys were, AEW is already doing that as far as seeing the piping, have the cameras down there, correct?
That's part of this program. We don't, we don't do the television investigation ourselves and we don't own a camera. It's always been contracted out to someone that specializes in that work. And then we review their work to make sure that everything's been accounted for, that the video they take is clear and accurate, that they've accounted for all the defects that we find. And then we basically rate and prioritize those defects for future improvements.
So the cameras that you had when I went to go visit, you guys don't monitor those, is what you're telling me?
Yeah, we would have gotten that camera from, from one of those contractors.
Okay, so they work in your office, the contractors. I guess, I guess the reason I asking this is because when you say sanitary and sewer cleaning, of course, the taxpayer is going to be, because they already clean the sewer and wait, because I'm on one of the boards and it seemed like this is going to be an additional payment for the taxpayers. That's what I'm looking at. Playing, you know, because they already clean the water, the sewers and stuff like that. I'm, I'm kind of confused. I thought we were doing this already. It seemed like this is additional payment that we're going to, the residents are going to be paying into. It's a good thing, but most people already thought we were paying it, so.
Mayor, we have this budgeted over the next three years in the budget.
Right. And yeah, there, I know, there may be some periodic cleaning that's done by the city. I know it's catch basin cleaning that's done by the city. But as far as mainline sewers, I don't believe anything is being done at this time.
Oh, wow, okay. Council, any questions?
I'll make a motion if you're ready, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, I'm ready.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'll motion to award the contract to low bidder Doach Tech Industrial Services of Warren for sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation program and authorize related engineering fees.
For.
Moving and supported, please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Moving right along. Item H, A Bid Award to.
Sorry. Would you mind if we take a five-minute recess?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. We're going to do a five-minute recess. Everyone come back in five, I think it was at 9:41, but everybody is back by then. We're going to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you. We have everybody back. We have Councilwoman Moore back. Councilwoman Curly? Oh, sorry, sir. Councilwoman Moore, she has one minute. She's going to take that whole minute. I know that's right.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, you didn't see, you know what? It's, I don't have the whole thing around. So you're going to take the whole minute. I know, that's right. So we, we are back in session. Welcome back, everybody. So we're going to go, move right along to item H, The Bid Award for Temperature Services Incorporated East Point Memorial Library Havoc Replacement Project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that to award the East Point Memorial Library HVAC Replacement Project to the low bidder, Temperature Services Incorporated, to include both the base bid work and the alternate, the replacement of the two furnaces in the amount of $112,520 plus a 5% contingency fund of $5,626 for a total project cost of $118,449.
A second.
Moving and support, please call the row.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Moving right along. Item I, Approval to Purchase a 2021 Fireliner Dump Truck. Any questions on this, Council? If not, let's move right along to voting.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to authorize the purchase of a 2021 Freightliner Dump Truck utilizing the MyDeal quote in the amount of $163,155.
One second.
Motion and seconded, please. Call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next item is payroll and bills, Council.
Madam Mayor, I motion to pay the bills in the amount of $2,801,244.94.
Support.
Moving and supported, please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
We are at our second hearing of the public. State your first name and your residency. If you have any opinions, any ideas, please let us know at this time. You get three minutes and we will answer any questions if known at the Mayor and Council reports, or you can email us at either one of us. But we also like you to email our City Manager at e doom@eastpointcity.org. The second hearing of the public is now open.
I'm not seeing any hands up yet. There's nothing in the chat. There's nothing there. Oh, one hand, sorry. Linda Flans would like to speak.
Hey, thank you. Welcome back, Ms. Flans. Thank you for waiting with us.
No problem. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment as far as approaching corporations to help fund things. The way I understand it, government entities are not allowed to fundraise because they are funded by tax money. This is why schools have parent clubs that fundraise. Parent clubs are a completely different entity than the school with their own budget board and accounts. Since the school is funded by taxes, it is prohibited from fundraising and that's how I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Taking a look through the chat. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, moving right along. Thank you. The second part of the hearing of the public is now closed. We are going to Mayor and Council reports. We're going to start with Councilman DeMonaco.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And just, I'm just going to keep it real simple. One thing, I think it's, it's birthday week here. I think tomorrow, recent Councilman Baker's birthday, day after, let's see, do I have this in order? I'm going to pull up my calendar real quick. Don't want to get these out of order. Then Mayor Pro Tem on Thursday, happy birthday. My mother-in-law on Friday and then happy birthday, Mr. Curly on Saturday. So what a week here we have.
Wow.
That's, that's really all I'm going to say. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All these Pisces are going to build in. Okay. Moving right along to Councilman Curly.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that birthday. Just one quick thing, Council and the public. I'm still concerned about what the, what supposedly the Supreme, Michigan Supreme Court has done in that if we have to go back to 2019, 2020 and then starting 2021. And Kim, maybe we can get a report from you or correct me if I'm wrong, but if that's what's going to happen and we have to go back to 2019 and if we paid and, if we paid and repaired a house for $50,000 and sold it for $100,000, that's a $50,000 profit and that money goes back to the original homeowner. Is that correct, Kim? They just say yes or no.
Actually, by city, by law right now, it would go back to the county treasure.
It goes to the treasure. So the bottom line is that if, if that goes back to 2019, do we have to, I guess we're going to have to pay for it. I, I don't need a comment because this is just, does that, but if we have to go back two years, that's going to be one hell of a, a lot of money that we're going to have to pay. So I'm concerned about that. Maybe you can get us a report for that.
Yes.
Okay. Other than that, happy birthday. What Cardi said is birthdays and everybody who's watching that we're not naming your name. We're not trying to slight you, but I love chocolate. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
I just want to say that everyone to enjoy Black History Month and go out and read up on it and learn more, get a little bit more education about black history. And be, be mindful, COVID is still out there. The restaurants opened up yesterday and even though the, the stats have gone down with COVID, just be mindful and everyone wear your mask. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Lucido?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I would like to thank Ms. Hall Rayford for hosting the Town Hall Virtual Meeting on Saturday. It was nice to see a lot of residents come out and engage with us. They asked a lot of really good questions. I definitely would be up for doing that again if she hosted another one. Hopefully, Ms. Councilwoman Moore and Mayor Owens would be able to attend also. And anyone else that is on the meeting tonight? If you follow the East Point Residents page, it was on there. Also, I'd like to say that Gleaners is having a food distribution at Connor Creek Academy at 16911 Eastland. And that's in Roseville on February 9th and February 23rd from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. I'd also like to wish Councilman Curly and Mayor Owens, I think they both have birthdays coming up. Happy birthday. And I think I think that was it for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for putting on the agenda the Black History Month. This is our second year doing this. So I'm excited, the, the change that we're slowly doing. We have a long way to go. As you can see, 2020 and what they did at the Capitol, we still have a long way to go. So, you know, saying that, I wanted to tell everybody what hate looks like. Hate is something that can be really scary when people are jealous, envious, and it turns into hate. If a house is burning and your child is in there and someone you don't like is in there, a person will actually watch their child die just to see the other person die. And that what hates look like. And so a lot of black people of, you know, and different minorities have dealt with that for so many years. And as you can see at the Capitol, how hate looked like, that people would mess up their own, you know, will, will hurt their law enforcement and hurt other people, you know, and, you know, in their, in their country just because of hate. And so when you see that, we have to look in the mirror and reflect on, is it really worth, because you hate somebody to, to stop, you know, seeing your city improve or your country improve because of hate? And we have to look in, look at ourselves. And sometimes when we go to these council meetings, I see a lot of things that, as a mayor, that I tried to do and I tried to improve for the betterment of this community. But because of, I still see a little things, different things in our council and in our city that we have to get away from. And how we're going to move forward is we have to get around that hate. Because don't watch your, your city suffer because you don't like the mayor or a council person because you still live in the city. So if you stop the movement and the progress of what someone is trying to do for the betterment of your community because you don't like them, that's considered hate, jealousy and envy. So just let's pay attention to what we are, what we're doing. And that if you're doing that, you're not better, you're no better than the people at, at the Capitol. So moving right along, black history is going to be amazing. It already started. I'm glad to be a part of that and I'm glad my ancestors did the hard work to let me be here of the city of East Point who worked with me and helped me to get where I am today. And also happy birthday to anybody that birthday is in February and so on. I'm glad to be able to, hopefully God lets me see that. Because it's not here yet, but I'm claiming it. So moving right along, we're going to go to closed session and then we're going to go to adjournment. If anyone wants to come back and hear us say bye, that's fine with me. But we're going to close this session right now. Close the meeting, go to closed session. So have a good night. If, if you come back, I'll see you in a minute. Can I get a motion for a closed session, please?
Support.
Moving and supported. Please call the row.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
We'll be in closed session to you all in a minute.